Good evening. This is the City of Morro Bay City Council. Regular meeting. It is Tuesday, October 26, 2021. It's 5:31 PM. And this meeting is being held via teleconference pursuant to Executive Order Number N-08-21, issued by Governor Newsom on June 11, 2021. This meeting will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on cable channel 20 and streamed on the city website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the Veterans Hall will not be open for the meeting. Thank you, and good evening. And I'll ask the clerk to establish a quorum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Councilmember Barton? Here. Councilmember Ford? Here. Councilmember Heller?
Here.
And Mayor Herring?
President. Thank you. We do have a quorum. I will call the meeting to order. And tonight, asking for a moment of silence in remembrance of the recent death of Fred Harvey Collins. Fred Collins was a powerful local advocate for the sacred northern Chumash lands. Died just about a week ago. And in your own way this evening, could you please remember the family as well as Fred and your prayers? And we thank you for that. I'll call for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And if we could have our flag, we will move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. And I will ask our city attorney, Mr. Newmeyer, do we have a closed session report this evening, sir? Chris, are you with us tonight? Looks like Chris may be having difficulty joining. Dana, do you see our city attorney on the...
He was in the meeting and perhaps got booted off. So I don't see him in the waiting room at the moment. We can come back to that item.
Yes, I'll come back to that in just a moment. Thanks. Let me know when he does arrive back. Thanks for that. And we'll move to Mayor and council members' reports. With that, I'll start with Councilmember Ford this evening. Good evening, Councilmember Ford.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. I actually do not have anything to report this evening.
All right. You're welcome. Thank you. And Councilmember Barton, please.
I have something that I wanted to share with all of you. I think we may have all received this email, but I wanted to read it to the people who are watching us tonight. This is an email that I received recently from Felipe Gonzalez, who works for the Slow County Foster Care Support. And I wanted to read this out loud. Some of those of you who know me know that I adopted two foster children many years ago. They were little short guys then, and now they're way taller than I am. And so I just wanted to just touch my heart. So that's why I wanted to share it with you. The email that Felipe sent was to make Morro Bay citizens aware of a pressing need for foster parents in San Luis Obispo County. And I had not been aware of this. And so I thought, well, there are probably other people who aren't either. There are about 300 children in need countywide and only 100 foster families countywide. So that's quite a shortage. So currently, there are about 21 children in the Morro Bay area who are in need of foster care through no fault of their own. So if you're listening tonight and feel moved to make a difference in a child's life, you can call Felipe Gonzalez, Slow County Foster Care. And his phone number is 805-781-1815. And the two big needs are for emergency homes, where children might have to be removed from a home in the middle of the night, that kind of thing, or homes for school-age kids, ages 6 to 18. So we were just together on a previous meeting, and the topic of not very many kids in Morro Bay came up. And I thought that I would share this with you. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Councilmember Barton, we appreciate it. Councilmember Heller, sir, you have a report this evening?
No reports tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. And we'll move to Councilmember Addis, please.
I'm going to use up all Councilmember Ford and Councilmember Heller's time because I have a lot. I actually have three announcements and then a little bit lengthier item. But I did want to share that on November 1st, on Afternoons with Addis, I'm going to have Michelle Shoresman from Women in the Pipeline, San Luis Obispo, also known as WhipSlow. But they are a group that works to encourage self-identified women to run for office, to break down barriers to civic engagement, and to support other women who are doing the same. So I encourage all of you to join in. We just finished Boarding Commission interviews, and I'm sure that Morro Bay will have more openings in the future. So if you're someone out there that's considering, come find out about encouraging women to get into the pipeline to elected office on November 1st at 5:30. And then on November 4th, from 7 to 9, the Planned Parenthood Generation Action Group from Cal Poly is hosting a 1970s dance party and fundraiser, Boogie for Your Body, at Bliss Cafe in San Luis. And finally, I want to invite my colleagues on council, everybody watching, all of staff. On November 10th, from 6 to 7 PM, Women's March Slow will be hosting an annual town hall with Congressman Carvajal, where we'll engage with him about issues that are important to the Central Coast, and that will be on Zoom. My more lengthy announcement is about reproductive rights. And on October 2nd, earlier this month, people from Morro Bay joined communities across the Central Coast to voice support for reproductive healthcare access. And in response to the Morro Bay participation, I wanted to briefly explain why this is on the mind of so many residents and visitors right now. In September, a law called SB8 was passed in Texas, which feels very far away. But what's important is that 1 in 10 women of reproductive age live in Texas. So when SB8 was passed, nearly 10% of women in the United States lost healthcare access within their own state. And SB8 takes an extreme stance on reproductive healthcare restrictions, banning certain care even in cases of rape, sexual abuse, and incest. It also deputizes private citizens to enforce SB8 and rewards people for up to $10,000 for trying to enforce laws against one another. So due to SB8, for the very first time since 1973, a U.S. state or 15 million people are without full access to reproductive healthcare. And some of those people are connected to Morro Bay as visitors, as family members, maybe even as second homeowners. And already clinics in California, including on the Central Coast, are receiving patients who do not have healthcare access in their own state. And we know that many people seeking healthcare seek that healthcare where they can find refuge, where they feel safe, and where they feel welcomed. So I hope that Morro Bay will act as a beacon of hope. I hope that in doing so, as a body, we will reaffirm our residents and visitors that we have a welcoming stance towards all people, including those who seek or may seek reproductive healthcare here on the Central Coast. And I'll bring that back later as an agenda, possible agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Appreciate that very much. I have no report this evening either, and I'll go back. I think we have our esteemed city attorney with us now. Chris, do we have a closed session report?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No closed session items to report.
Good, and welcome back. Okay, Mr. City Manager, Scott Collins, your report.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I would like to bring forward Scott Cram to give an important community update, both to council and to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, Mayor, members of council. I mean, good news to report. We recently closed, finally, on the purchase of Dog Beach approximately two weeks ago. So you're now the proud owners of Dog Beach. We will probably be bringing this forward and having some kind of event out on the site, maybe after the first of the year. We're required to erect a sign related to the donors, meaning where we receive the money from. And so once we get the sign designed, complete, and installed, then we'll probably schedule some sort of event out there to recognize those that did donate funds for the purchase of Dog Beach. So that's my update. And I hope you have a good meeting for the rest of the meeting, yep.
Good. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate that. And congratulations, Morro Bay, proud owner of Dog Beach now.
Yeah, thank you. And I just wanted to also update the community. I think we had mentioned last council meeting, we thought the goals would be discussed tonight. But that's going to likely be held as a special meeting, I want to say, on November 10. We'll get more details around that. And also, the parking study will be brought forward to City Council on the regular meeting on November 9. So I just wanted to get that out in the public. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. That ends our regular reports this evening. Brings us to presentations. We have two presentations tonight. The first, Dana, if you will, promote Senior Chief Ben Snyder from the U.S. Coast Guard Station in Morro Bay. Chief Snyder is here this evening to give us an update on the construction project at the U.S. Coast Guard outlet here in Morro Bay. So I want to welcome on behalf of the council and our community, Chief Snyder. Is Chief Snyder with us, Dana?
He is. Chief Snyder, we're not able to hear you. I don't know if your microphone is on. I realize you're on your phone. Hopefully, there's an adjustment for that.
You're muted now, Ben. You're unmuted, but there's no audio coming through. It looks like he's frozen now. Okay, now he's up. Ben, can you hear me? Shake your hand, yes. Head, yes? Okay. Yeah, you're not. There's no video, audio coming through. Did you want to try to reconnect and see if that does it? Okay. We'll go to the next presentation, and we'll put you in the waiting room. Oh, it looks like he's trying to connect now. Hold on. Good. You may have to log out, Ben, and then log back in. Okay, try. Yeah, let's try that. And Dana, we'll put him in the waiting room for a minute, and we'll go on to our next presentation for our Friends of the Morro Bay Harbor Department. Friends of Morro Bay Harbor Department. And do we have, let's see. I think tonight, we're going to have Roger. Is Roger with us this evening?
Yep, we got Roger Allen.
Hey, well, you got him sequestered in your office, huh, Eric?
Yes, I did.
Well, welcome. Roger Allen is here on behalf of Bill Lefay and the Friends of the Harbor Department. Roger retired from the City of Morro Bay on October 22nd, on his 75th birthday. I hope it was okay for me to announce that, Bill. I mean, Roger helped with trash cleanup, beautification, and many other odd jobs around the waterfront, from pavement striping to graffiti cleanup, just to bring, being a great ambassador to Morro Bay. And he's here tonight on behalf of the Friends of Morro Bay Harbor Department, which is a not-for-profit community group established to help improve the harbor services in Morro Bay. They were established in 2014 by Morro Bay resident and former Harbor Advisory Board member, Bill Lefay, who couldn't be with us this evening. While on the Harbor Advisory Board, Bill saw the need for additional support and funding for our Harbor Department. And he established the Friends with the mission to help improve harbor services in Morro Bay. As a not-for-profit organization, this organization relies on memberships and donations from people who want to make a difference and preserve the beautiful Morro Bay Harbor and its services. Amazingly, to date, the Friends have received over $150,000 in memberships and donations that go toward such varied projects as lifeguard tower acquisition and refurbishment, a new solar-powered emergency phone on the sandspit, replacement of the sea lion dock in the bay, and most recently, refurbishing a surplus harbor patrol vessel that was acquired from Port San Luis Obispo. Because the Harbor Department is tasked with boating safety and enforcement, firefighting, ocean and surf rescue, boater assistance, medical aid, and environmental response, and that its jurisdiction includes or consists of some of California's most notoriously rough waters, in an effort to modernize its fleet, last year, the department purchased a lightly-used patrol boat from Port San Luis with the help of an $85,000 grant awarded by the California Division of Boating and Waterways. The vessel was needed to ensure that the Harbor Department can continue to safely provide the unique services the community needs and has come to expect. Because of budget challenges, in order to meet its capital needs, additional funds were needed to undergo repowering and refurbishing of the Port San Luis vessel. Under Bill Lefay's leadership, the Friends of the Harbor Department came to the financial rescue of the rescuers, and in September of 2020, launched a new fundraising effort with the goal of raising $100,000 to go towards the new patrol vessel. One year later, the Friends successfully reached their goal with 80% of the funds raised from individual contributions and 20% as a matching grant from offshore wind generation proponent Castle Wind. The vessel is currently in the manufacturer's boatyard in Santa Barbara and is expected to be mission-ready by April of 2022. And what a tremendous example of community volunteering and community volunteerism and giving. And I just want to personally thank Bill Lefay especially for all of his leadership efforts. And on behalf of the Friends of the Harbor Department, thank each and every one of you for your leadership. And also, Roger, thank you for being here this evening. But most of all, I want to thank our community members that gave so generously to make this happen. So with that, Roger, would you like to say a few words, sir?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say thank you to all the generous donations we received from local communities and places far away. Bill was saying some of them were out of state and out of country. So just want to say thank you to everybody that contributed.
Great, and congratulations on your retirement. And please pass on to Bill our just great thanks for all of the work that the Harbor folks did. Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Andrewsby, for your leadership as well.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and move. Dana, do we have Senior Chief Ben Snyder from the U.S. Coast Guard with us?
Chief Snyder is back.
Hi, I'm back. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Welcome.
All right. Good to see you again. Making progress. Likewise, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for having me on. Yeah, so as far as the incoming project with aids to navigation in Morro Bay, you know, again, the Coast Guard Station, the personnel at Station Morro Bay, we are not responsible for the project that's happening. However, you know, we're happy to relay information that we do know. I've been working closely with Mr. Andrewsby at the Harbor Department and his staff, and they've been fantastic. We're working directly with the Waterways Management Division of District 11, so all of California, and their aids to navigation team. The plan will be to replace many of the aids, starting with buoy four, so coming into Morro Bay Harbor, and replace some of those aids, the buoys themselves, with actual fiberglass pilings. The aids would remain the same colors, of course, you know, which would identify the port and starboard sides of the channel. However, they're also going to work with us as far as maybe new positioning for some of these aids. And so we haven't gone down that path yet. But when we do, we'll be working closely with the Harbor Department, using their expertise and their local area knowledge, surpassed by nobody, including my own staff. So it's great working with them. And that's kind of the idea and the reasoning behind it is really cost effectiveness for the Coast Guard. As you guys probably know, every time we have a big storm, many of these buoys are either broke free from their moorings, from their anchors, or they're either moved or repositioned. So far, we've had one and a half good storms, and we've lost at least one buoy each time. So every time we do that, it requires a team to come out from LA and travel, do the work out there, and it's very risky for their boat itself. So we're trying to reduce some of those risk levels and, over time, make a better financial choice. So that's the kind of purpose behind it and the direction we're looking to go.
Great. Well, we appreciate the service of the Coast Guard so much in Morro Bay. And it looks like you're working, Chief. So we appreciate you taking the time to be with us this evening. And again, thank you and all of your staff for the great work that you're doing to keep us safe in Morro Bay.
Absolutely, sir. It's an honor to do it. We love the town, and my staff loves being here. So we appreciate it very much.
And our best to your lovely family.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I can jump back in, and Ben, don't leave yet.
Roger, that.
I'm going to put you back on the spot, sir. If you can talk about the addition on your building here and where your status is on that.
Oh, absolutely. So we are finally moved into the extension onto our station. I was the lucky officer in charge that inherited the project, that finally completed it. And I take zero credit for that, but I was at the right place at the right time. So my crew is ecstatic to get in there. We're already moved into, there's two extra duty rooms, two additional restrooms, showers, heads, we call them, and then a nice drying room for wet gear, so dry suits, wet boots, all that sort of thing. So we're using it already. And then we're refabbing some of the existing spaces. And the plan will be, once we get those complete, you know, right now, we're an all-male crew, and we look forward to, you know, kind of going back to a mixed-gendered crew. It's most common in the service. So right now, we're just limited based on space, on actual living quarters. Now that we have a little bit more elbow room in there, we can identify like a room for females, males, and keep them separate. It'll be fantastic. Once we get some more personnel in, get some different faces, male, female, the diversity is great for all of us. So we look forward to having that onboard.
Great. Thanks for that update and that. And it's great to be able to house our female Coast Guard members as well. And we appreciate the end work that you were able to do, Chief, even though you weren't here for the majority of it. But, you know, it's always good to be able to take a little credit. So thank you again for being here this evening.
May I ask a question?
You certainly may.
Oh, thank you.
Councilmember Addis speaking.
Yeah. No, thank you so much for addressing that issue. Is there any kind of timeline around when staffing might be addressed? Mixed-gendered staff. Sorry. Is there any kind of timeline around when mixed-gendered staffing might be addressed?
Yeah, so I mean, like, it's already been addressed over the last several months. Since I arrived, it's been a priority of mine. I mean, ultimately, it's going to be up. I'm going to request, and it's a little bit different. You know, we will try to get females at multiple pay grades. Having one really young gal come in to an all-male crew, it just doesn't sound like a lot of fun. And I wouldn't want my daughter to go, you know, be kind of lonely, to be honest. And so what we're looking for is, you know, for hopefully four, five females to come in, kind of all different pay grades, they can support each other, the crew can support them. And well, it's going to be fantastic. This is an unusual situation to have an all-male crew at a Coast Guard station. It was based on, we had two duty rooms and almost all males. You know, I think it changed, I think a dozen years ago or so, where they were limited on space. And so they switched it to an all-male crew. And, you know, that was what that happened then. Now we're back on track. And we're hoping, I'm hopeful for the winter, but most likely the summer of 2022, which is what our normal transfer season is, what we call our assignment year. And we try to transfer the majority of our folks between May and July and just to safer traveling for everybody. And we're hopeful, and I would guess probably the majority of our female crew coming in, probably during that time.
I appreciate that, and I've heard how popular the Morro Bay Station is. So I appreciate the opportunity. We'll be open to all genders. Thank you.
Absolutely. You bet.
Thank you, Chief. Have a great evening. Appreciate it.
You bet. Thanks for having me, Mr. Mayor. Take care.
You bet, indeed. Okay, that brings us to public comment. This is general public comment for items that are on the agenda for which you can't stay and speak to, or any other items regarding the city you'd like to comment on. Again, general public comment is now open. And I believe we had a short comment from Principal Carl Bloom. Is Carl with us, Dana?
Mr. Mayor, this is Highland from AGP. Carl Bloom is not in the waiting room.
All right. Then we'll go to general public comment. I'll go ahead and open up public comment. And we're ready.
All right. First up, we have Linda Winters.
Okay. Welcome, Linda.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, and staff. I'm Linda Winters, private citizen, AKA Mobile Home Linda. It's been 19 months since we all met in person at the Vets Hall on March 10, 2020. It seems like eons ago. Those of you may remember, I was a constant attendee to each and every meeting from beginning to end. I miss that energy, but I don't miss the chairs at all. I spoke before council in the city about life in the 15 mobile home parks here in Morro Bay and the wonderful people that live within those mobile home parks. I've attended every Zoom meeting since then. So let me reintroduce myself to the new council members. Hi, I'm Mobile Home Linda. I would like all of the council members and staff to be aware of and review a very important ordinance pertaining to the 750 to 1,000 residents that live within the Morro Bay Mobile Home Parks. Please, please, please read Ordinance Number 499, the Mobile Home and Recreational Vehicle Park Stabilization Ordinance. It's only 14 pages, but it is the safety net to rent control for all of our mobile home park population that have lived and supported in the city for years and years, some of us for as long as 30 years. I would love to meet with council members to make them familiar with the Ordinance 499 and the separate set of state laws that pertain to mobile home residencies, mobile home residents in the entire state of California, and that is known as the MRL. We would like to stay in our homes and keeping them affordable without fear of losing them for as long as possible. On another note, I was given an assignment from the organizers of the On another note, I was given an assignment from the organizers of the Morro Bay Thanksgiving Dinner to get every member of every mobile home park to invite them to that wonderful dinner. I hope to accomplish that and see all of the councilmembers helping to make the dinner happen. Thank you for listening to Mobile Home Linda, and I will see you at the next meeting on November 9.
Thank you, Linda, and welcome back. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Highland, next public comment, please.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up, we have Richard Sadowski. Richard, you have been unmuted.
Welcome, Richard.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here to speak in support of the Morro Bay Estuary Air Monitoring Project for a community grant to purchase a stationary air monitoring station at the estuary. About two years ago, our group received a grant from the city, the Community City Grant, and purchased a handheld hair hair monitor capable of monitoring carbon dioxide, and we did that for a year around the Morro Bay Estuary, and during that time, we collaborated with Cal Poly University in their study of ocean acidification. Recently, I sent the city council a email with a copy of the report that we did and also support letters from Supervisor Gibson and Dr. Bachman from the Cal Poly Marine Science Department, which we hope to continue providing that data. You know, Morro Bay is, the M B project is more than just a project that quantifies elements. It's, it typifies community involvement. It's where the city, you know, it's, it's a project that collaborates, brings collaboration between the young and old and education. It values citizen science, and, you know, it shows that the city is, you know, values a healthy estuary. And and I hope that the the city council could fund this for for this project to continue. And and another thing is, for those of you out there, if you want to help support, you can Google GoFundMe Morro Bay Estuary and get on the GoFundMe page and and drop whatever you feel like there, you know. But, yeah, I hope that you guys support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Next public comment, Helen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next up, we have Dawn Betty.
Welcome, Dawn. Dawn, can you hear me?
I sure can.
Oh, good. Welcome.
Greetings, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Staff. My name is Dawn Betty, and I live in Morro Bay. I just wanted to shake a moment to thank Scott Collins, Kirk Holmichael, and anyone else involved in making the concert and the clusters ready to go. Unfortunately, Mother Nature had different plans, and the concert was postponed until spring. Stand by in spring to hear more. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Dawn. The only day it rains for a year, and it was concert day. Sad that we weren't able to have that, but looking forward to it when it's rescheduled. Highland, next comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next, we have Betty Winholtz.
Welcome, Betty.
Good evening. This is Betty Winholtz. I'd like to make a comment and ask a couple of questions. They all have to do with the W R F construction going on. The comment is that I first had questions about noticing our traffic conditions, how they would be posted, and particularly around 4th of July. And when I wrote to the number that we're supposed to write to on the email or phone, I did not get a response, but when I waited a little bit and then copied the council, then I got a response. When I had another question this fall about changes in routes and trans, how we could get around town, because construction pieces had changed, they weren't posted, and I again wrote, and this time I copied the council on the first go around, but I got no comments from anyone about the postings. So I guess I want to bring up the idea that if our website is not going to be kept up to date, and if notices aren't going to be made, either about construction, transportation routes, and or about updates, which we're supposed to be getting regularly, I would hope that the council would not be paying that consultant piece that is supposed to be doing that work, because you are not getting a product for that cost. And I I can't say that strong enough, that if we're not getting a product, then we shouldn't be charged for it. My questions, I have a couple. One has to do with the contract for the pipeline between Main Street and the Roundabout. According to the construction contract, and I believe it's section 1.7.2.3, says that there will be, that that road, that section of Quintana will be open from November 1st through January, and I'm just asking if that's going to be true, because that's next week, and I know other pieces have changed, and so I'm wondering if this piece of the contract will be honored. And then my last piece has to do with with the bike path, and a few months ago, you were asked about the numbers that were on the trees and saying that that was just for taken account, but now those trees have disappeared, and there are now stakes down there that say roadway. So my question is, are you planning on putting a road in there and getting rid of the bike path? What is up with the trees? It's, looks like it's been clear cut. It's, again, I raised the issue a month ago about permitting for removal, and I haven't seen anything on the website about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Highland, next public comment, sir.
Next up, we have Kathleen Mink. Kathleen, you have been unmuted.
Welcome, Kathleen.
Hello. Before I begin, I'm not sure I'm speaking at the correct time. I I wanted to respond to your staff's recommendation for funding for my organization, and it's item C 2 on the agenda, so should I speak now to that, or?
You can, you can speak now, or you can wait for the item when it comes up, which will be later in the agenda.
If I can speak now, I'll do so.
Go ahead, please. Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kathleen Mink, and I'm on the board of the Diversity Coalition San Luis Obispo County. We've done important work fostering understanding in our community and promoting diversity since 2011. We were formerly the Five Cities Diversity Coalition. Two years ago, we expanded to cover the entire county. I'm the education chair. Our education outreach covers all levels from pre-K to adult, and I'd like to just briefly enumerate what we do at each level. At pre-K, we support the Peace Academy Summer School, which takes students from all over the county, and they play and learn beside children of other ethnicities and languages. At the elementary level, we help to send teachers to the Museum of Tolerance to participate in a three-day training on diversity education. We have done that for Lucia Marv. We pay for the substitutes for those teachers to be able to get away. At the middle and high school levels, we coordinate with the schools to bring speakers to the students. We have nine speakers on our list now, including a Holocaust survivor, Japanese internment survivor, Shumash Indian elder, Lost Boy of Sudan, and and others. I'm currently working with the teachers at Morro Bay High School to bring a couple of those speakers this year, and we've brought them for the last two years as well. And at the adult level, we bring speakers on a wide range of topics to the community. So I'm proud of our education programs, and I just want to take this chance to thank you for your support of our good work, and to thank you and the staff for the recommendation of funding. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Appreciate it. Highland, next public comment, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no more raised hands in the queue.
Go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council. If, I don't know if we have somebody from our W R F team here, just a couple of questions that Ms. Winholtz had.
I can field those, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, regarding the outreach, I mean, there are good points raised by Ms. Winholtz. You know, Anvil is trying to catch up on schedule. We had a delay in starting the pipeline project due to some coordination issues between the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and the State Historic Preservation Office, which kind of oversees cultural, historic, sensitive areas, particularly with our historic nature of Native Americans and their history here, and known issues and sensitive issues or locations within the pipeline route, which we've tried to avoid to the best of our ability, but some of that's not avoidable, and SHPO is very key to ensuring we do this properly, and it took quite longer than we expected in terms of them authorizing us to move forward. So Anvil, Nessence was delayed for over a month. In addition to that, they've been challenged, just like the rest of organizations in the time of COVID, with worldwide staffing challenges and the great resignation, that it's, it's really challenged their ability to complete this project on time. So how that shows up in terms of the impact is, they're stretched out a bit more than what I think they originally planned. I don't think anybody planned for a pandemic nor a delay that we experienced with SHPO. So we've had to sort of change the game as we go, and we've had some other challenges as well, including the microtunnel challenge that also strapped them from a scheduling standpoint. So we we recognize that it's not, it's not going exactly to plan. Corrello is working with Anvil to help improve the overall flow of traffic, as well as how that's communicated. So it's easy to blame the communication team, but it's really not the communication team's issue here. It's really just how the pipeline project is ongoing. So we're hoping to kind of get that back on track as far as a traffic standpoint, be able to communicate clearly to the businesses and the neighbors that are impacted by that. So just something we're looking into. With regard to kind of outreach and getting back to people immediately, with some questions, that's easily done. When there's more complicated questions like about trees and traffic plans, those are highly technical, and so we want to make sure we get the correct information, and that sometimes requires four or five members of the team to provide input, and that does take time to make sure we answer those questions thoroughly and appropriately. So just, just sometimes you can't get back to somebody on a challenging question in 24 hours. With regard to the trees, there's no plan for a roadway. It's the removal that's occurring with vegetation in that area is related to the pipeline. There may be some ancillary work that's not related to what we're doing on the Visterra property, but mostly what you're seeing is what's being cleared for the pipeline route. That's to ensure the safety of our sewer and potential, you know, our our future water source, which is the I P R line. So that has to be done in a way that is safe and follows all the guidelines that's been established by the state. So unfortunately, vegetation becomes, there becomes a need for that to be removed. We are following all the requirements of the coastal development permit. Anytime we are planning to remove vegetation or trees, we are doing that in consultation with the coastal staff overseeing our project. So we are following that. We also acknowledge that, yeah, there has been a lot of trees removed. City Council has made that recognition and has asked staff at a previous council meeting to develop options for replanting those trees, potentially in other locations. We're also looking to see if some of those trees could be replanted in that area. It is complicated in some respects because it's Visterra property, so we're looking at various options to help kind of make it look better than it currently does. So just, I hope that answers those questions. I don't know if there was anything else, Mayor.
Just if the, I'm not sure about the pipeline contract, but section 1.7.
Yeah, that's a good question. It's, I think, you know, we, to the best of our ability, want to honor that. The intent of that was to not affect holiday shopping, I think primarily. So if there was a change to that, it was certainly something we'd bring to the Water Reclamation Facility Subcommittee. It's not something that we've discussed internally yet, but if it does become a need, again, to stay on schedule, that would be something we would discuss with the Subcommittee and ultimately City Council.
Great, Scott. Thank you for answering all those questions. Very comprehensive. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
With that, that brings us to our consent agenda. This is item A on this evening's agenda. This is the consent agenda, item A 1 through A 6. And I'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for the consent agenda only. And Highland, do we have any public comments, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Betty Winholtz for public comment.
Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. This is Betty Winholtz again. I will read the note that I sent to you earlier today. A B 361 neither requires city, this is in regard to item A 4, excuse me. A B 361 neither requires city meetings to stay on Zoom, nor demands that in-person meetings take place. It leaves that discretion up to each city. Morro Bay Council and staff are choosing to stay on Zooming. The school board, the Board of Supervisors, LaFCO, the City of Slow, all meet in person. Schools, churches, movie theaters, all meet in person. Individually, each of you are out in public at churches and events and rallies, yet you will not allow the public to meet with you in a safe distancing fashion in the Vets Hall. I would like to know why not.
Thanks, Betty. Next public comment, Helen.
There are no more raised hands in the queue, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I will close public comment, bring it back. Ms. Winholtz is referring to item A dash 4. I'll pull that and ask Chris to respond, and I'll, and I'll make a comment. So if there is any other items to pull, I'll take those now. If not, we would look for a motion to approve A 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6.
I'll move to approve A 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6.
Okay. There are second.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Addus to approve A 1, 2, 3, 5, and 6, second by Councilmember Ford. Any further discussion on those? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Addus? Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedy?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, and I'm pulling A 4 and ask Chris to just give us the rule of the road regarding the law and to maybe correct perceptions about other cities.
Sure. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. A B 361, Assembly Bill 361, was passed by the legislature prior to the expiration of the executive orders that cities and counties and all public agencies have been doing teleconferencing Brown Act meetings under. Pursuant to A B 361, public agencies, including council, may continue to teleconference if certain conditions are met. And those conditions are basically that there continues to be a statewide state of emergency, which there is, and that it has to meet one of a few other criteria, just one of them, one of those being state or local officials have imposed or recommended measures to promote social distancing. That is the case. County Health Officer Bernstein has, Penny Bernstein has in place right now a mask mandate. It currently requires masking in any indoor public setting. There is actually some criteria that the county has issued for lifting that mask mandate. Specifically, the county has said that when Slow County reaches a moderate or yellow CDC COVID-19 transmission rates for 10 days, and in the judgment of the county health officer, COVID-19 hospitalizations in the county are low and stable and capacity sufficient to meet the needs of all patients, that mask mandate will be most likely lifted. Recently this week, the city clerk and I reached out to the other cities in Slow County. Every single city is continuing to teleconference, including the city of San Luis Obispo. They just held their most recent meeting under teleconferencing. The only city that isn't is Paso Robles. So five of the seven cities are continuing to teleconference, and before Morro Bay tonight is a resolution that would allow the city of Morro Bay to continue to teleconference. As for any public agencies that are holding in-person meetings, which are, like I said, only one. only one of the cities in Slow County are doing that, they are under order of the public health officer to use masks during all those meetings. If there's any other questions about AB 361, more than happy to answer those.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate the comprehensive answer to that. Again, the City of Paso Robles has gone live. They're the only city in the county that has. And with that, I'll move approval of A4.
I'll second.
Motion by Mayor Heding to approve A4, seconded by Councilmember Addis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll ask for roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
I'll put first together, thank you. That brings us to Item B1. This is a major modification and coastal development permit to approve the change from a six new residential parcels to five residential parcels on the .99 acre site located at 2783 Coral Avenue as part of the Cloisters subdivision tract 1996. The six-unit project was approved by City Council through appeal on November 3 of 2018 with the following permits: CUP, a vesting tentative map, and subject to conditions of approval, and the mitigation and monitoring plan included in the adopted mitigated negative declaration. The project is Zone CRR/GC/PD, Coastal Resource Residential Golf Course Plan Development, and is located in the Coastal Commission Appeals Jurisdiction. This is a public hearing this evening. We'll start with our staff report, followed by any council questions. I will then open the public hearing, ask if the applicant would like to speak, then open up general public comment on this item. I'll close public comment, close the public hearing, and then bring it back to council for discussion and action. That'll be our process this evening. Thank you. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Nancy Hubbard. Nancy, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. And sorry, the intro was so long. I wasn't thinking when I wrote that, that you would have to read the whole thing. So thank you, Mayor, and members of council, and I'm going to share the screen and give you a presentation. Are you seeing the presentation?
Uh, no, Nancy.
Okay. Well, we'll keep trying.
It's good now.
Okay, perfect. Here we go. All right. So this is a major modification for a five parcel residential subdivision, including home design and site plan approval. And if you haven't been on the council for the last three years, this is a map to show you where the site is. It's in the Cloisters subdivision, and it is on the corner of San Jacinto Coral and Highway 1. So the reason for this hearing is a six-unit residential subdivision was approved by Planning Commission in 2018, and permits were issued for vesting tentative map, conditional use permit, and coastal development permit. The project was appealed to City Council, and following the continuance, on November 13, 2018, City Council upheld the Planning Commission decision and denied the appeal. Following final permit approval, the coastal development permit final action notice was provided to California Coastal Commission for review. California Coastal Commission determined that the original CDP permit for the Cloisters subdivision was applicable to the project and asked us to void the recently issued CDP. California Coastal Commission also wanted to review the records to confirm the actual amount of density remaining for the development of this parcel. So why we are here. In March 2020, California Coastal Commission finalized their immaterial amendment to the original 1992 coastal development permit, confirming that the density available for this site was five residential parcels. On July 2021, the property owners submitted their request for modification to the originally approved plans to change from six residential units to five residential units. The submittal included home designs and site layouts as required for the vesting tentative map. Because the final permit approval was determined through City Council action, City Council is the decision-making authority to review and approve the amendment to those plans. Changes in the submittal, I'm not going to go through each line item, but basically this covers different aspects of the proposed development and compares the six parcel plan to the five parcel plan. The primary differences are less density going from six to five, larger lots, the home designs and the home sizes are exactly the same as the three plans that were included in the six parcel plan that was approved. There are two garage and two driveway parking spaces, so there's more parking per home. All setbacks are met in the five parcel plan, and there's an option for two 517 square foot attached ADUs to two of the proposed home designs. So this is an overview of the six residential parcel plan, just so you can see the similarities. The, this has four homes facing each other on the long part of the driveway, but has two homes on the right side of the screen, which is closer to San Jacinto and the intersection with Highway 1. The revised five residential parcel plan has also the four homes facing the driveway facing each other and one home at the end by the San Jacinto and Highway 1 intersection. You can see there's been slight changes to the design of the private driveway and more landscaping area. Home Plan 1, there was no change in the design or size from the originally approved plans. Home Plan 2, also no change in the design or the size from the previous approved plans other than the possibility for an addition of an attached ADU on two of the sites using Home Plan 2. And just a note that ADU review and approval must be ministerial. This is the home material board choices in color, and this is two of the three plans that were approved with the first approved six residential parcel subdivision. So a little overview of public comment, and I've paraphrased the questions and kind of grouped them so that we could cover each subject once. So why isn't Planning Commission reviewing this again? And the reason is Planning Commission reviewed and approved the project in August 2018. Through the appeal, City Council reviewed as well and upheld the Planning Commission decision and denied the appeal. So the City Council provided the final decision as such, they're the decision-making body to review the minor change. Oh, sorry, too fast. Why wasn't the California Coastal Commission March 2020 immaterial amendment provided in the City Council packet? And the California Coastal Commission immaterial amendment is a change to the original 1992 coastal development permit that memorialized that a density of 125 homes were allowed in the Cloisters subdivision. It's been provided to the City Council today, but otherwise really wasn't relevant to the review of the minor change from six residential homes to five residential homes, site plan, and home layouts. How can you have a dead-end private driveway without a hammerhead or other turnaround from emergency vehicles? And the fire department has reviewed and determined the acceptable access to fight fires for each of these proposed homes, and the approved driveway plan provides the driveway width and length that satisfies the requirements for the development. 150 feet or less does not require turnaround. How will tree replacement be mitigated? All conditions of approval, including the off-site tree replacement mitigation, will be monitored and inspected to ensure compliance. Why is there no designated guest parking? City zoning code does not require guest parking for single-family homes. The Cloisters design guidelines also does not require guest parking. All of the residents in the Cloisters have the ability to use the public streets for parking. And why is there no sidewalk on the shared private drive? Sidewalk curb and gutters are already provided on the Frontage Road, Coral Avenue, and on San Jacinto, both of which were built or upgraded by the city standards in 1996 to 1998. There are no requirements for shared private driveways to have sidewalks or other public improvements. It's a jointly owned private driveway owned by the five residents. And a final question. Can Coral Avenue be redesigned or restricted, or can the parking be restricted on the street? Public streets, including any special design or parking restriction, is under the purview of the Public Works Department. Public Works did not require any changes to the parking or street design related to the public parking in their review and consideration of this project. Now on to Design Committee conditions and staff responses. October 13, 2021, the Cloisters Design Committee provided a conditional approval of the five individual home designs, material boards, and site plan. Conditions are as follows. They want sidewalks, curbs, and gutters on a private shared driveway. And again, there is no city requirement or requirement in the 1992 coastal development permit conditions of approval for sidewalk curb and gutters on a private driveway. It's a private driveway, not a public street. I think maybe that is the confusion. The design is appropriate for the private use of these five homes and complies with the fire department access requirements. Second comment, respect setbacks to be consistent with other Cloisters home, homes. The project meets the setbacks in the development standards of the zoning district, which are the same as, whoop, changed that, which are the same as stated in the Cloisters design guidelines. And finally, construct a sound wall along Highway 1 to match the adjacent property. And then the images here, the top image on the right shows the developments immediately south of the subject property and the sound wall that they have running along Highway 1. And then the photo in the lower corner is a photo of the site, and you can see on the left side a little bit of that sound wall. So the original conditions of approval for the Cloisters subdivision includes a provision that a seven-foot tall sound barrier should be installed along the rear property lines of lots 42 through 45. And that is the lots immediately south of the subject property and lots 79 through 88, which are in the cluster on the south side of the Cloisters. The condition states that the sound walls shall be subject to the director of the, to the approval of the director and shall be located so as not to have the effect of walling in the highway. Plantings are required to block the view of the walls. The applicant has proposed a wood fence that meets the development standards for fencing and will accept the decision of the director on this issue. So what happens next? This approval includes the required coastal development permit for the vesting tentative map and for the home designs and the site layouts. So if the home design and site layouts don't change, the applicant can submit for building permits for each home when they're ready and not require any further planning permits. The applicant is responsible for any further Cloisters Design Committee reviews. And that concludes the presentation, and the staff recommendation is for approval of the major modification and coastal development permit through approval of Resolution 71-21.
Thank you, Nancy. Very much appreciated. Thanks for the comprehensive staff report. I especially want to thank you and staff for taking time to add the additional slides to answer the questions that were raised via email during the email public comment. So thank you for that very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
With that, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for council questions. Council, if you'll hit your little raise hand button there, I'll recognize you. Are there any council questions of staff at this point? Don't see any hands raised. Okay.
Your hand is up, Mayor.
I'm sorry, I'm not picking you up here. Sorry, but I have Councilmember Heller. I'm missing, hold on one second, let me just find out why I'm not seeing you there. Oh, there you are. Okay. My apologies. Councilmember Heller, yes, go ahead.
Yes. Thank you, Nancy, for the presentation. Appreciate it very much. So is this a major or a minor change?
So I should have covered that. It's a minor change, but the process required discretionary review. So in our permit system, a minor permit is reviewed and approved administratively, and a major, a major modification is discretionary. So they had to apply for a major modification, but as you can see from the presentation, there is very little change from the five-unit plan to the six-unit plan, other than the actual one-unit difference.
So that's why there's no need for...
It really is minor.
So it doesn't have to go back to the Planning Commission for that reason, or because the council made the final decision, right?
No, I think for both. But if it had more changes, I think we would have recommended that Planning Commission look at it, but there aren't changes. It really is the same plan, just one less unit.
Okay. And then the zoning for this parcel, is it the same zoning as the balance of the Cloisters tract?
Yes.
Okay. And when the city decided to sell the parcel, I think that was 2007, was the zoning changed at all, or has it consistently been this zoning from the beginning until now?
I would have to go back and look. I was prepared to talk about the changes from the approved permit.
Right, okay. Okay. Is there any code or conditions in the city municipal code where driveways are considered as guest parking?
The city does not require guest parking for single-family homes.
Okay. So for this development, though, it sounded like the, there was a change made so that the driveways were expanded in front of the houses, and that would be considered guest parking?
Well, it's just like any other house. Like, if I have a house and I have a two-car garage and I have guests come over, they probably are going to park in my driveway. So it's really no different, and I don't think that the applicant needs to specify who's parking out there. It just provided more parking because there were public comments before that people were concerned that there wasn't enough parking. So now that the site is more spacious, because there's only five homes, he was able to improve the size of the driveways.
Okay. And then the private drive or the common drive, whatever you want to call it, it's basically a 20-foot wide fire lane, isn't it?
It's access to all of these homes, and it also meets the fire requirements.
Okay. But no parking is allowed along this drive at all, correct?
I think from a practical standpoint, it should be kept clear.
And you mean from a fire access standpoint?
Yes, but I don't know that there was not a condition of the fire department's comments.
Okay. The design guidelines for the tract, which obviously is a big issue here for the Design Committee that's been working on this. Do the design guidelines say that curb gutters and sidewalks are required in the Cloisters, except for private drives?
They don't mention that at all. That's really not up to their design guidelines. That's really not up to their design guidelines. That's really up to Public Works.
Okay. Are there any private drives existing in the cloisters right now?
There are some long driveways. There aren't any shared driveways.
No shared, no shared ones, okay. You know, is it, it's hard to read minds, but is it possible that the original developers of the tract, since they gave the parcel to the city for fire department, is it possible that they never considered that it might be used for any other purpose, so that the city would sell it off and most certainly not be used as a subdivision with the private common drive? And so the design guidelines never specifically addressed this issue? I mean, is that a possibility?
No, these homes are subject to the same design guidelines as any other home in the cloisters.
But there are no other private, common, shared driveways in the cloisters, except this would be the first one, right?
Yes.
What about the latest suggestions? I mean, basically, from what I can tell by reading the comments from the Design Committee, it's primarily a parking issue, from what I can tell.
And, and I don't believe that's in the purview of the cloisters design committee guidelines.
I mean, I understand the issue between public parking on the street and the private, private drive, but, you know, and I understand the city's position on it. You know, there are a number of developments where you have a private, common drive, and parking is a nightmare. One of them is the one on Main Street, the twelve-hundred block of Main Street, where there's four or five houses there. A couple of them have been converted to short-term rentals. It's basically a fire lane, and they have continual problems with people parking there, guests parking there, obstructing the fire lane. So this looks like another condition that this could easily happen. Let's see here.
Is that a question, Councilmember Heller?
It's a question whether or not we need to, perhaps in the future, look at our private street, common drive issues with respect to parking. That's all I think that's a question.
Thank you.
That's all I have for questions. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Looking for any other council member hands for questions for staff? Seeing none? Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. And Nancy, do we know if the applicant is present and would like to make a statement?
Yes, they are. It's Kevin and Fritz Huber.
Okay. We'll go ahead and allow them to make a statement. Welcome, Kevin and Fritz.
Mayor, how much time would you like to allow for the applicants?
Will there be two of them?
Just one of us.
Okay. So how much time do you need, do you think?
You know, probably five minutes or so.
That would be fine.
Okay, great. Good evening, there are heading members of the council. Kevin Huber, who represent Morro Bay Ventures, my company is Group Huber Company. And I'd just say, this has been quite, quite a process for this subdivision. I'm happy to see that we still have some members of the council who were present the last time this was brought before you. And congratulations to the members who've been elected or appointed since then. It's hard to believe it's been two years since we were before you. I also want to thank city staff, and specifically Scott Graham and Nancy Hubbard. After we learned that the process that we were given by the Coastal Commission and actually followed for eighteen months was not the process that a new coastal planner felt was correct, there was a lot of history and detail that needed to be retrieved and reviewed by your staff and forwarded to the Coastal Commission, and it was a major effort. And so there's, you know, it was just really something that they did a superb job on. There are a few items I'd like to add for the public record, and one, one thing specifically to Councilmember Heller's question regarding the use of the site and the contemplated use if it was in a fire station. Actually, in the dedication of the site, it was contemplated that if it was not used as a fire station, that it could only be used for residential. And that's, I can find that document if you need me to, and forward it to you after this meeting. We've complied with every request that staff has made, and we agree with all of the conditions of approval in your staff report. Based on the Coastal Commission approval, we reduced the lot count from six to five. We also amended the site plan to accommodate the major concern that was expressed by the opposition at the last council meeting, which was the ability to park two cars in the driveway of each lot, like every other home in the cloisters. You may hear additional requests for onsite guest parking tonight. I know there were some in, in the correspondence to the council. There is nothing in the CCNRs or the design guidelines for the cloisters that addresses guest parking. And I would encourage you to request the section or language of these documents that addresses guest parking if it's raised, as I would be interested in reading it. In fact, our architect for this project, RRM, wrote the design guidelines for the cloisters and has designed multiple homes in the cloisters. The design of this project actually limits the garage frontage that would otherwise occur with all of the lots fronting public street, and it's consistent with other planned unit development designs, both in Morro Bay and many other cities. The project is consistent with all Morro Bay city codes. We actually expanded the wrapper habitat mitigation per a planning commission request, even though the report indicated that the site was not suitable for wrappers. We've complied with every legal requirement we've been asked to comply with, and we have added components to the plan, like the stamped concrete driveways, entryway, additional landscaping in response to requests by neighbors. There have been several comments regarding parking and a possible impact on Coral Drive. Our project accommodates the same parking as every other home in the cloisters with two guest parking spots in the driveway and overflow parking on the street. Every other home in the cloisters has this right to have guests park on the street, and in fact, as a public street, non-cloister residents can park on Coral and walk to the park. There seems to be a fear that buyers of these homes will, for some reason, have more guests than other homes in the cloisters. We don't believe this is the case. We have approximately two hundred and fifty lineal feet of Coral Drive frontage that fronts the site, and we just don't see this as a problem. I would like to also add that I read the letter from Melanie Williams Mahan to the council. Ms. Mahan indicates that the Design Review Committee has not been able to meet with us. I'd be happy to provide the council with a copy of the design guidelines, where it states that the committee is to hold an open meeting, give the applicant the date, time, and place of that meeting, and that the applicant is to be invited to the meeting. We made a formal application and paid the requisite fees, yet we were not given any notice of the committee's meeting, nor were we invited to the meeting. We received a copy of their decision without being offered any opportunity to have dialogue. Any failure to meet has not been due to our unwillingness. I also received a review of Karen Mahan's letter to the council, and I would direct you to his testimony before the council in twenty eighteen. He requested only that we have the driveways of these houses be able to park two cars. There was no request for any of the other improvements he is now requesting. I also find it interesting that the Design Review Committee didn't suggest the bold-out spory forfeit pedestrian walk in their comments to us in their formal approval letter, which is included in your staff report and which Nancy just reviewed for you, the conditions that she reviewed. What we continue to see from this group of individuals is that they do not adhere to the CCNRs themselves in the formation of their committee, in the way in which they conduct their reviews, and in what issues they have jurisdiction over. They continue to bring up new issues in an effort to delay the project. Given the process that we have been through, I would submit that there is nothing premature about moving this project forward tonight. For the public record, today, Mr. Stevens finally provided me with the ballots that are required to elect Design Review Committee members per the cloister CCNRs. Based on the ballots provided by Mr. Stevens, once again, these members have not complied with the CCNRs, did not receive a majority of the votes of the lots in the cloisters. If this is the case, their comments should not be considered as being on behalf of the cloisters, but as individuals. In summary, we believe this project will be an excellent addition to Morro Bay and to the cloisters. The Coastal Commission has approved a number of lots to be added on the site, and nothing has changed in the design of the houses from your earlier approval. Where space allowed, we have added ADUs per state law, and we have met with the approval of all of your city departments with their appropriate conditions, and your staff is recommending approval tonight. I would respectfully request that you approve the major modification and the coastal development permit. Happy to answer any questions now or later, and would request a write-up rebuttal, but understand if we've not time.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Appreciate that. That's the testimony of the applicant. I'm gonna go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for item B dash one, our public hearing item this evening, B dash one. Any member of the public wishing to speak on B dash one, public comment is now open. And Highland, what do we have for public comments, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First up, we have Dawn Betty. Dawn, you have been unmuted.
Welcome, Dawn.
Greetings, once again. Councilmember Heller, you asked a question about being, the site being purchased in two thousand and seven. Actually, that sale did not go through, and my understanding is that the sale took place in mid-2000 sixteen. Now, my question is that that lot was sold to a Jeff Mayer, and yet I'm understanding that the owner is Kevin Huber, as Morro Bay Ventures. And I'm curious what the relationship is. Perhaps the question has been asked before, and I apologize, but I'm, I'm big curious as to what that is.
Thank you, Dawn. Next, public comment, Highland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next, we have Betty Winholtz.
Okay. Welcome, Betty.
Thank you. This is Betty Winholtz again. I, I, I have a couple of comments and questions as well, particularly about the minor-major language. They're getting a major modification permit, and yet staff is calling it minor just because the house designs haven't changed. And yet, if you look at the document from the Coastal Commission, they recommended the parking curb cider and gutter. And I'm not sure how you can cherry pick their permit, because it talked about all those things, and yet they're just wanting to acknowledge the five houses, the tree removal, but not the other pieces that were included in the permit. And so I, I think that's a little bit disingenuous, that all of those items need to be included. They all make for major changes, and that's why it really does need to go back to the planning commission. Also, I did not hear a comment regarding my point number four about, in the letter of November fifteen, twenty eighteen, from city staff to Mr. Huber, in the description saying that this is subject to the cloister CCNR and design restrictions. And I would think subject is more than just saying, oh, they can have input, but they actually have in, what they say needs to be taken in as part of the conditions. And I'm not satisfied in terms of the response regarding trees. It was a conflict in the document, the staff report, because on one page, it says, oh, that we're going to replace with these trees, the orbutus, the cianotes, the melaleuca, the olive, all of which are not trees of stature that would be used by the raptors, and yet the permit says there will be raptor trees here or somewhere else. So I, I'm not satisfied with that answer, and I'd like that clarified. I'd also like to know where it says, because I think I heard this stated tonight, that if the drive is a hundred and fifty feet long, then that is okay not to have a turnaround. And I know that there's a private drive in the cloister, not in the cloisters, excuse me, in the Culver Development down off of Main Street, and they do have one side painted red, so there's no parking, but the other side does have parking. And I'm not sure how you can say that cloisters in San Jacinto are this, are the frontage streets, because they're in the backyards of these houses, and, and what's in the front yard is the driveway. So if you could please address those again, thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Highland, next public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next, we have Linda Winters. Linda, you have been unmuted. Linda has lowered her hand and kept her mic muted.
Okay.
So next up, we have Melanie Mahan.
Okay. Welcome, Melanie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Melanie Williams Mahan, and I'd like to address lot one twenty-four of the cloisters. First, I would like you to know that I am on the cloisters design committee, and I am struggling to understand why this lot is being voted on tonight. Our design committee was put in place to make sure the cloisters remains the premier development on our entire West Coast until it is built out. This project came to us three years ago, and we have met with the owner developer once, only once, and that was per our design, that was because we wanted it to happen. As per our design guidelines and the CCNRs, we are to be involved from step-one plans all the way through construction. We are essential to this planned community. Planning Department, and the Morro Bay Planning Department has all but taken this project out of our hands. Our negotiations have broken down to the point where we don't know why the planning department is acting and responding as the applicant, the lot owner, or the lot owner developer. You, as, as a council, have held many closed-door meetings over the years, and yet here we are, being left out of the loop again. Please postpone this vote tonight until I hear from the California Coastal Commission on procedure. The Design Committee is a peer-elected group, and we are responsible to those peers, although I am struggling to understand why the developer has requested copies of our voting records. And I don't know why city planning in the city is allowing this instead of having us work together. I mean, that's what we want. We are doing what we are supposed to do, and that is make sure this mini-development conforms with the design guidelines of the cloisters, and we are here to make that happen. And we are willing to work with this man, but I'm sorry, it's, it's just broken down so much. I, I mean, I'm appalled at what he just said about us tonight. Okay? Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Highland, next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am seeing a raised hand from Kevin Huber. Can he be unmuted and allowed to speak?
If, if we don't have any other public members.
Yes, we do not have any other raised hands from the public.
All right, then this will be rebuttal, and I will allow it? Yes.
All right. You have been unmuted.
Three minutes. Just three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a lot. I wanted to address the question that Dawn raised regarding Jeff Mayer. Jeff Mayer initially signed the contract, but the contract to purchase the property is actually Jeff Mayer or any as of me. Jeff is my partner on this project, and is, we create, like we do on every project, we created a project-specific LLC for the project, and as I said, Jeff is a, is a fifty-fifty partner with me on this project. So I hope that answers the, the question with regard to Jeff Mayer. I think staff can address this, but Ms. Winholtz's question on, on the tree replacement, I don't believe the onsite trees are intended to mitigate the trees that are being removed. I believe that we have off-site mitigation of raptor trees, and those are to be done pursuant to the director's approval at an off-site location, and we, we simply will follow the city's lead on that, but we're committed to the, the tree mitigation. With regard to following, we, we have followed the guidelines specifically with regard to making applications to the Design Review Committee. We've done that multiple times. We have not been included in their meetings. We were included in what was not a Design Review Committee meeting, it was just a meeting with the members of the committee, with our architect, to discuss the project initially. When we made the formal application for this project, we were not included in any meeting for deliberation or to have any dialogue with them. And with regard to why we should be entitled to a copy of the vote of the members that elected the Design Review Committee, we are an owner in the cloisters and have been since we purchased the property. This vote appeared in twenty eighteen. We did not receive the ballot, and we also think it's appropriate for us to ask if the committee members have in fact been duly elected by the members of the cloisters per the CCNRs to represent the cloisters as Design Review Committee members. The ballots that were provided to me today by Mr. Stevens would indicate that, in fact, that did not occur, that they had not received a vote of a majority of lots of the cloisters, and that therefore there is, they do not represent the design, the cloisters as a Design Review Committee. And if, if they want to provide other information to, to show evidence that they do, I'm, I'm more than willing to, to review that information. So again, we think we've complied with every possible thing we could comply with, and we don't see anything in the, in the CCNRs or the design guidelines that address guest parking. And with that, I will close and just respectfully request approval of this project.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. That ends public comment. I'll go ahead and close public comment. I will close the public hearing, bring it back to council. I will close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any additional follow-up questions, either of the applicant or staff, based upon the testimony that was given during public comment. I will ask staff just to briefly, I'm trying to figure out if there was anything new that Ms. Winholtz raised that wasn't responded to in your presentation. She's questioning the major versus moderate designation. I think you explained that, but did you want to clarify that again, either Mr. Graham or Ms. Hubbard for us?
For the major versus minor, I think Nancy did a good job of describing what that was. It really just had to do with the process that we're in and where the project's located. This had to go back through a discretionary review process. The discretionary review process in our permitting system is a titled major modification. It's the title that's associated with it on the master fee schedule. If it were a minor modification, it's something that could be handled at the staff level, then the change would could be a minor modification, again, another name on the master fee schedule. That's really the only difference. The changes to the project, again, I agree with Nancy on this as well, are fairly minor. You know, their models remain the same, they reduced the lots by one based on, you know, action by the Coastal Commission. And they've come back with the project, and now this also does have ADUs with it, but, you know, again, these are basically the same models that we saw before. And they did address one of the concerns that was expressed as part of the appeal process that went to council previously, and that was to provide parking in the driveways, and they've done that. I think this project would be far worse if it had individual curb cuts out onto San Jacinto and Coral Avenue, and certainly would reduce the amount of parking available on those streets if they were to have individual curb cuts that were out that way. I think this solution from an access and parking standpoint is a more elegant solution than individual curb cuts out onto the major surrounding streets.
Yeah, any other comments regarding the tree issue?
Yeah, the tree issue, yeah, Mr. Huber was correct. The raptor habitat condition was to be located, those types of trees offsite, the sort of ornamental nature of the trees that are proposed onsite are just that ornamental. They're part of the landscape plan, they're not meant to be raptor habitats. So Betty is, Ms. Winholtz is correct in that. We will be doing what the conditions say, though, to place them in some area that could improve raptor habitat, and we'll be working with the applicant on that, assuming the project receives approval and comes forward.
And just to reiterate the point that you made during your presentation, which seems to be the biggest point or one of the biggest points of contention, does this project, as you're presenting it tonight with this minor modification, which is subject to the CCNRs of the cloisters, meet the design guidelines and CCNRs?
Yeah, so two things. One is CCNRs, and this is a lot in the subdivision. It is subject to all of the same requirements as any other home, with maybe Jeff's exception that this doesn't have a private driveway, it has a private driveway that's shared. But its design guidelines, it's met all of the other requirements that are within the purview of the cloisters to determine. So the conditions of approval that we receive for this group of homes is the same process we receive for any home. And we actually postponed a city council hearing so that we could have the conditions to give them more time to finish their review and have the conditions. So I'm not sure that our process is any different than any other home in the cloisters. The only difference is that they've proposed conditions that are outside of their purview. I did want to also mention that the frontage, the Morro Bay zoning code defines frontage as the shortest distance property line on a public street. So I think part of the confusion is that the private driveway is not a public street, and Coral meets that description, so Coral is the frontage. So the front, the rear, the street side and the side are determined for the lot as a whole. And I think that's where they're confused. They're thinking that if you're looking at the front door, that has to be the frontage, and that's not the case. In most cases, it is true, but there are a lot of other developments in Morro Bay on throughlots or corner lots where the front of the house is not the frontage. So this was calculated based on technical frontage definition according to the Morro Bay Municipal Code.
Thank you, Nancy. Councilmember Addis, I see your hand.
I'd actually like to move approval. It might be too early, but.
Go ahead.
But I'd like to move approval, and I'd like to explain my motion just a little bit. Number one, I want to say that I am glad that the Coastal Commission lowered the density. I am incredibly frustrated on behalf of the applicant that they had to go through so much to get this far. But I do think it's a good thing for Morro Bay to have more housing and to have more ADUs. We just sat through two hours of meetings with board and commission applicants, many of whom cannot find affordable housing in this community, one of whom explained that he actually makes a great income and feels like he has privilege and still cannot find housing. And when I ran for council, I approached the late councilmember Davis on housing, and at the time, nobody was talking about it, and there seemed to be a general feeling that there would be nothing we could do about it. Now, two years later, it's become a crisis where families are leaving Morro Bay. Good people who maybe could be mayor one day, as one of our applicants said, are leaving Morro Bay because they simply cannot afford to be here. I don't pretend that this development is low-income housing. It's obviously not. However, the ADUs will help the housing stock, and some would say that any housing will help the housing crisis. So from that perspective, I think it's critically important that we move this project forward. And I want to appreciate the cloisters' design committee. They've put a lot of work in over the last three years. They've raised some valid concerns, but I do think staff has responded to those concerns adequately. And as a council and a planning commission, we've approved this project. It feels like my third go-around or my second go-around of approving almost the exact same project, only now it's one with less density and more options for affordable housing. So that's the reason my motion's on the floor.
So did you want to go ahead and make that motion?
Yep, I want to move approval.
Okay, so a motion by councilmember Addis to conditionally approve the project by adopting City Council Resolution Number 7121, which includes findings for MAJ 21-005 and CDP 21-036, subject to the conditions of approval related to this modification and mitigation measures from the 2018 adopted mitigated negative declaration for the project, and I will second that. I will second it because I believe that the applicant has gone out of their way to satisfy and meet the demands of the cloisters' design committee. I do believe that time is of the essence for this project. This project has been before council, planning commission, as you've stated, councilmember Addis, a number of times. I believe that it will do what you have said, improve the housing stock in the community, be a good project. It has also been vetted significantly by staff and meets all of the ordinances and requirements of our planning department. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and second that and open it up for any other discussion. Councilmember Heller.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a tough one, because obviously we have a lot of time and money by the property owner invested, we have the design committee, we have the need for housing. You know, the problem I have with this is I don't believe that people who developed this tract ever conceived that there would be a private or common shared driveway for homes. There are none in this entire tract, and that's part of what gives the value to the tract and makes it appealing to people to live there. And so I just think it was never considered as something that might happen. I'm also troubled that the city sold the property when we need a fire station north Morro Bay so badly, and it was dedicated to the city, and then the city sold the lot off. But that's not the issue of this application. I have a hard time approving this because it just doesn't fit. I don't believe this is what the people who planned this original development planned for. It's not a shared driveway for two homes. It's a shared driveway for five homes with ADUs with no guest parking. I don't know about you, but I park my car in the driveway all the time because my garage's full of stuff. So we're going to have a lot of parking issues on Coral, without doubt. I don't know how it's going to turn out, but there are going to be a lot of cars parked on Coral. And every other development like this with a shared driveway where there's four or five units on it in the city, it may meet with the city guidelines, but I have a real issue. They're very problematic. I get complaints from constituents because people are parking in the fire lanes. It's not a good way to build. So I can't support this motion. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing no raised hands, I will ask for a voice vote, please. Excuse me.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1.
Thank you. That completes this item. Appreciate, again, all of the staff work that was done for this over the years. I do appreciate the cloisters' design group, their input, and their communications to us. I do understand the concerns that they have raised, but again, feel that all conditions have been met. So thank you again to everyone involved with this. We really appreciate it. All right, that brings us to our first business item. This is Item C-1. This is to receive a summary of community forum on Morro Bay Power Plant Exhaust Stacks and authorize the city manager to send a letter to Vistra Corporation informing them the city releases Vistra from the city option to request stacks to remain on Morro Bay Power Plant facilities. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Collins. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, and community members. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. One moment, please. All right, everybody see my screen okay? Take that as a yes. All right. So again, Scott Collins here to present what we learned through the community forum on the Morro Bay Power Plant stacks, and we'll discuss recommendations when we get to the end of this presentation. There we go. Just by way of kind of reminder how we got here, the city entered into a memorandum of understanding with Vistra regarding the power plant site, but also regarding the stacks. And the MOU has approved by the City of Morro Bay on June 9th of this year. Vistra is responsible for the demolition of the turbine building, which is the large building, as well as the stacks, unless the city requests by the end of 2022 that the stacks remain. So long as that is conducted by before December 31st, 2027, Vistra will not have to pay the city $3 million. If they fail to demolish that building and the stacks, if the council wants to go in that direction, it must be completed by the end of 2027, or else Vistra must pay the city $3 million. That was after a long protracted negotiation with Vistra. So ultimately, the last remaining decision with regard to the existing facilities on the Morro Bay Power Plant site that are owned by Vistra is really around the stacks. At that same meeting, council committed to community engagement around the future of the Morro Bay Power Plant site, as it's a critical catalyst site for the Morro Bay community. They further supported engagement at a later meeting by approving a contract with Don Maruska to facilitate a community forum. And again, in that same June 9th, 2021 meeting, council reiterated their support for community engagement around this catalyst site. And these are the key components for consideration: safety, quality of life, a vibrant, diverse local economy, contributing to the city's financial sustainability, environmental sustainability, balancing benefits and impacts, consideration of local Native American heritage and cultural resources, and conducting meaningful public engagement for information and input. So that led us to moving to have a community forum. Of course, in the middle of a pandemic, we had to kind of improvise like everybody else has and chose to use the Zoom format. We advertised this in the newspapers, on our city Facebook page, our website, got a lot of good input from that. The purpose of this fax about the stacks forum was to provide timely information and opportunity for public to gain insights from which to develop informed points of view about the future of the stacks. We understand this is an emotional discussion. We've seen it next door and other venues online, and the purpose of this fax about the stacks, again, is to provide actual information to help inform that discussion and ultimately the input that makes its way to city council. That forum was facilitated by Don Maruska, who's done a lot of facilitation in our community as well as other surrounding communities. We had nearly 200 members of the community participate on that Zoom forum. We received 40 emails from community members prior to that event with sort of stated positions about what should or shouldn't happen to the stacks and also good questions to be considered. And those emails were shared with the presenters to help inform their presentations. That forum and this council meeting is not addressing the proposed battery storage project, just want to make that clear. There will be other opportunities for public information and comment on that. The forum presenters included folks from Vistra, San Luis Obispo County Air Pollution Control District, APCD for short, the California Department of Toxic Substance Control, DTSC for short, and Coastal Commission, California Coastal Commission staff participated via comments ahead of the forum. So just quickly get into the origin and conditions of the stacks as it stands today. The stacks were necessary component to the Morro Bay Power Plant site. The first stack was constructed in the 50s, the next two in the 60s. They served our, you know, our community both locally and the region for delivering energy to our various communities. Ultimately, the power plant was shut down and decommissioned in early 2014. The stacks ultimately served no purpose beyond, you know, a platform for PG&E communications to Diablo. If the stacks were to be demolished, another location would need to be identified. And because the stacks are so tall in a plane route, they are lit specific to FAA requirements. But again, if the stacks were taken down, it wouldn't affect that because their structure would no longer be there. So beyond that, there is no purpose at this point for the stacks. Here's a photo, I think of inside stack one, and then you can see on the right side is the foundation that was created for that same stack, 15-foot-thick concrete base, pretty massive structures, and ultimately it stood the test of time since they were built 60 or 70 years ago. According to Vistra, they are in good condition. They're known hazardous materials in the stacks from their vantage point. They complete an annual inspection of the stacks through APCD as required. They've stood the, withstood the 2003 San Simeon earthquake, though we have no data if they would withstand anything stronger than a 6.5 on the Richter scale. Again, according to Vistra, the concrete stacks could live, you know, in excess of 100 years. They've made it 60 or 70 years or in good condition, again, according to Vistra. It's in accordance with the good engineering practices that they go through an annual inspection. According to Vistra, those annual costs are about $15,000, and then there's maintenance costs in terms of light replacement, bolt replacements on the ladders, and those kind of things that are really related to structure, cost anywhere from $5,000 to $30,000 a year. And according to Vistra, if the stacks were to be maintained kind of in the long term, each of the stacks would need to be capped, and each one of those caps cost approximately $275,000 to install. I mentioned APCD. They had a team that presented at the forum, and I'm not going to go through their whole PowerPoint, but ultimately, they are responsible for inspecting the stacks on a regular basis, and they have found very minimal amounts of asbestos in the three stacks and no issues from their vantage point. Regarding the future of the stacks, both the option to retain and remove, the Department of, DTSC, Department of Toxic Substance Control Regulatory Agency, would be involved in any kind of future reuse, both of the stacks or if they were torn down, if the building was torn down. APCD would be involved. APCD would be involved in any kind of tear down to make sure all the proper screening and safety elements were put in place so that asbestos would not kind of be spread throughout our community. You know, it used to be that these facilities would be blown up, but now they use far more labor intensive but safe practices to ensure that hazardous material is not flowing into our community. With regard to any kind of reuse or future development on the site, Coastal Commission as well as the city would have regulatory authority on that as well. The new general plan designated, designates the power plant site as a visitor-serving, commercial mixed-use residential overlay. So any kind of industrial use would require a master plan or any kind of redevelopment would require a master plan process as well as amendment prior development if it included something other than a visitor-serving use. We have known examples for sure of power plants being repurposed for a variety of uses. This right here is a Port Royal Power Plant in San Francisco. It's built in a similar way as the current Morro Bay Power Plant site. And here's, here's a kind of artist rendering of what they plan to do with that same facility again in San Francisco, which would, you know, kind of recreate the existing building into some kind of mixed use purpose and then maintain the, the stack as sort of an ornamental component of the development. We also have examples of, of similar power plants being demolished. The Encina Power Plant is in Southern California in Carlsbad. And talking with their deputy city manager, I believe the stack has almost entirely been removed, but it was of a similar size. It was a single stack, but a similar size to the Morro Bay Power Plant stack. And again, they do not implode these facilities any longer. They chip them away from top down and all the materials that's sort of chipped in goes, falls into the, the center of the column to again minimize the, any kind of hazardous material being exposed in our community. And again, this is an important consideration that I haven't identified, but in, in speaking with Vistra and what they stated in the community forum, they have no intent of maintaining the facility or the stacks. Back there, their strong preference is to remove those facilities because it provides greater opportunity for redevelopment of the site and thus, you know, revenues for them. According to them, it's cost prohibitive to reuse those facilities. We did a tour of those facilities last week and it's essentially like the former owners of the power plant just turned off the key and walked away from the power plant. Because all of, most of the stuff is still in there. And it's pretty significant in terms of what it would take to take all that out to repurpose it for some other use. And according to Vistra, that's cost prohibitive. So their desire is to remove all those facilities to provide way for future redevelopment of the site. So from their vantage point, if the city were to request the stacks to be remained, that they would want to transfer ownership and liability of those stacks that have no purpose for them to the city to maintain. And so in, in considering those, those calculations, we, we did a kind of a rough estimate on the cost to the city for the options of retaining or removing the stacks. Retaining the stacks, we, we know about the need for caps or $275,000 per stack, the annual inspections, maintenance, insurance for the stacks. Looks like I listened to that twice. Sorry about that. And then ultimately needing to reserve funds for removal of the stacks at some point in time. Vistra said that's anywhere from two to five million. I've heard estimates that it's much higher than that. But certainly on the low side, it's at least several million dollars that would need to be reserved for their removal. If council were to request removal of the stacks, that would be performed entirely at the cost of Vistra and not the city. So there would be no expenses to the city, but there could be additional revenues brought forward to the city if there were some redevelopment of that property. And again, Vistra must tear down the turbine building. And if the stacks are added to that, all that must be completed by the end of 2027 or else they must pay the city $3 million, which further incentivizes them to remove those facilities. So based on the, the simple economics and the fact that there's been no tangible or serious facility reuse proposal brought forward to previous owners or Vistra, the current owner of the Morro Bay Power Plant site, staff recommends that city council authorize staff to send a letter to Vistra, you know, expressing our interest to not exercise that option and to sort of take that off the table. But also request that Vistra or future Morro Bay Power Plant owners honor the historic significance of the plant and the memories associated with that of the stacks through development of some type of monument in the future if the facilities are actually eventually removed. So with that, I conclude my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate the comprehensive re-review of the educational session and the thoughtful staff report outlining literally everything associated with it, including the MOU costs, et cetera. So thank you for your report. I want to go ahead and open it up for council questions of staff at this time. If you have a question, go ahead and raise your hand. No hands raised. Okay, no council questions. With that, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for item C dash one on the agenda this evening. Public comment is now open. And Highland, do we have any public comments, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see one raised hand from Betty Winholz. Betty, you have been unmuted.
Welcome, Betty. Are you there, Betty?
Oh, here. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, sorry. This is Betty Winholz. I, I think that this decision tonight comes quicker than the community anticipated. Earlier, you were saying that you would consider going through December with consideration, even though the decision to Vistra doesn't have to be there for a year from this December. And yet you're going ahead with this decision now. It, it seems like it's a favor for Vistra, not for a benefit for Morro Bay, where we have a chance to dialogue and share. Certainly the forum informed us, but it didn't offer a chance for too many opinions. Even the planning commission the other night, it was the last thing on the agenda, wasn't necessarily well advertised other than in the normal way. So I don't think people were aware. And as you've articulated, it is an emotional issue for the city and I'm not sure how you are providing for our input. Again, just making the decision right now before you had said you would and then a year in anticipation. So I, I want to object to the decision being made now and hope that you will postpone it.
Thank you, Betty. Next public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am not seeing any more raised hands in the queue.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council. We have, I'll start this evening. I am going to support the staff recommendation to authorize the city manager to send a letter to Vistra Corporation informing them that we will not exercise our option to request the stacks to remain, which is section seven of the memorandum of understanding between the city and Vistra, and that the city unconditionally releases Vistra from any possible exercise by the city of that option. That is a motion. And then I'll go to discussion if I get a second on that.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Heding for item two on the staff recommendation, seconded by councilmember Addis. And thank you, councilmember Addis. Councilmember Addis and I serve on the Vistra Subcommittee. We have been working very closely with staff and Vistra over the last year, specifically on a number of issues. Primarily the memorandum of understanding, which has been previously discussed and approved at a prior city council meeting. But also when we first dialogued as a city council regarding the potential for reuse of the building and/or the stacks, there was mixed feelings on the part of council at that time regarding whether portions of either the building or the stacks should or could stay and what that would mean. We came to find out very quickly that the building itself was in a dismal condition. And that was validated when we all went, or at least by myself. And I won't speak for councilmember Addis, but when we toured the building and the stacks a week ago, which is the first time I've had the opportunity to actually be inside of Vistra and, and see that. And I must tell you, the building itself is in a much worse shape than I ever thought it could be or, or should be or would be and presents significant public health hazards. And so obviously, Vistra's desire is to see both the building come down and the stacks come down. And that reaffirmed for me the notion that indeed that building was not repurposable and that was the right decision. And we, we initially as a council debated whether also to consider immediately not including a discussion on the stacks in the MOU, but felt that we did want to give the community an opportunity to give input. Because candidly, the council at that time didn't understand what the requirements would be of the city if we maintained the stacks or took over the stacks. And indeed, Vistra informed us if our decision was that the stacks were to remain, then that would become the obligation of the city, including all financial and legal obligations for maintenance of those stacks and eventual tear down of those stacks. And that, despite that, we did want to go through a process. And I do believe we have significantly vetted this. I must tell you, we've had not only the educational forum, we've had Polco open for quite a while regarding a community survey on the stacks. Many individual council members have reached out in, in their own personal sessions and obtained input regarding the stacks themselves. We've had a planning commission meeting where very little public comment was given. Again, tonight, we have this item duly noticed. Literally, we have no public comment or one, one individual commenting. And so I thought long and hard about this and, and although I think there is some credence to the possibility that a more prolonged process might identify some opportunities, I absolutely believe that the cost associated with that would be insurmountable for, for the city. We do know that the cost to maintain these stacks would be something that in my mind would put the city in a very dismal financial condition. We have an unfunded CalPERS pension liability that ranges anywhere from $25 to $30 million that we know of. And if CalPERS lowers their discount rate, that number just goes up incrementally. We have an OPEB liability that is rising rapidly each year, double digits, that now totals several million dollars to the city and really have no funding mechanisms long-term for these potential big hits that the city might receive. In addition to that, we have worked hard by passing measure G, and thank you, community members for that, to improve public safety. And that is to be competitive with our wages and salaries in our departments, specifically fire and police, but also across the board, hiring additional staff, improving the equipment that we utilize. And my sense is if, if we were to go ahead as a city council, we would be violating one of our major goals. And that is to maintain fiscal responsibility or sustainability for this city. If there were an absolutely positively identified revenue stream associated with keeping the stacks that could offset the costs that we know to be true, perhaps my, my considerations would be different. But I don't see any way that the city is in a position now to repurpose those to make them either a viable tourist attraction or something that could generate money or revenues for the city. In addition to that, I believe that making the decision now will allow the city to engage with Vistra in conversation regarding the development of the master plan, which we're advocating for and have included in the MOU, to actually find what new uses might be available for that site when the building comes down and when the stacks come down. We have a willing company owner right now that's willing to take the financial obligation of taking this stack, these stacks down and the building as well, desires to do that. And I believe it's a once in a lifetime opportunity for the city to take advantage of that and remain financially secure in the future. I'll mention also that this city has no capital budget. We have no general capital budget for replacement of things that are years and years and years old. We have small amounts of dollars that replace minor equipment and autos or vehicles, but we do not have a plan for funding the future for infrastructure failure, which is going to occur in time for this city. And that is another major concern where if we were to take these dollars away from the opportunity to build a capital fund, I think it would be, we would be remiss as council members to do that. I will say also that, in addition to that, that the opportunity to recognize the rich history of this, these stacks is something that certainly could happen and I believe should be part of this. And for all of these reasons, I do believe that as a decision maker for the city, it's absolutely the right thing to do now to exercise our option to ask Vistra, Vistra to remove these stacks. And I'll stop there and ask councilmember Addis, my, my co-member of our Vistra Subcommittee, if she has comments. Thank you.
I would, and thank you, Mayor, for illuminating your motion for us. I think it's important for people to hear the history of how we got here and why it's so important to keep moving forward. And I wanted to say thank you to staff for putting on facts about the stacks. It was incredibly popular. I personally received a lot of good feedback. And what really stood out about that feedback was folks writing in who said, "I used to want to keep the stacks and now that I understand the issue, I have the information, I no longer want to keep the stacks." And so I have gotten no contact since then from anybody saying that we should keep the stacks. All of the contact that I've received, all of the comments that I've received, and there have been numerous comments. So I do believe that not just the 200 people that logged in that night, but others who have viewed this online, watched the videos that are posted on the website. I do think the word has spread across the community. There's also been articles in the newspaper about this. And public sentiment has really changed. And I think as leaders, it's up to us to really listen closely to that. I too went on that tour and there were so many comments about it being perfect for Halloween. It really did feel like a haunted house, walking through there with flashlights. Not only is it filthy, but it's just plain rundown and unhealthy and doesn't appear to be a place that we would be able to refurbish to a point that it would be inhabitable by anybody for anything. But I do want to appreciate the historical significance of the, of the stacks. And that is a piece of comment that has come to us over and over, that they're very special to us. So if this motion passes, I would very much like staff to start that conversation quickly with Vistra around some kind of monument. And I'm hoping it'll be Instagrammable because I'm ready to beat Pismo on their Instagrammable spaces. And I think we can do that between the rock and the stacks. I have a lot of optimism about where we're going next. So I very much want to say thank you to you, Mayor, for being on the Subcommittee before I was. I've enjoyed being on it, being part of it, learning more about this issue. And I do feel comfortable with the timing of this. I don't feel like it's a surprise to be at this point, at this juncture.
And I do apologize, councilmember Addis. I will amend my motion to include that the city manager be directed or staff be directed I will amend my motion to include that the city manager be directed, or staff be directed to move forward to discuss with Vistra a proposal to honor the power plant and stacks with a monument slash point of interest in the event of the facilities and stacks coming down, which is Item 3 on the staff report. If that's okay with you, you second that?
I'll second that friendly.
Thank you. So we do have a motion amended and a second motion by Mayor Headings, heading second by Councilmember Addis, and any other discussion? Councilmember Heller, yes?
Is this time for questions, Mayor?
No, we already did questions. This is a discussion.
I had to step away.
Oh, I apologize. If you have a question, fine.
So this could also be discussion if I don't have?
This is discussion, yeah.
This is discussion, I'm sorry. Step away.
That's okay.
So in terms of discussion, I don't think there's anyone in the city that wants to assume the financial liability for the stacks. Obviously, the more people talked about it, the more it became clear that it's not something we can afford to do or necessarily want to do. Where I'm coming from, though, is the stacks are part of, in terms of reuse, potential reuse, the stacks are part of the building itself as a possible reuse opportunity. We talk a lot in Moro Bay about what we can do to differentiate ourselves from the other coastal towns, and I'm kind of at a loss on how to do that, frankly. I mean, we have the rock, we have the estuary program and so forth, and it's a nice bay, but to really make ourselves different, I think we need to think in a larger, in a larger fashion. And, you know, across the country and around the world, buildings like this have been repurposed, and they become attractions, worldwide attractions. And I see this rather than something that's old that we need to tear down, but something we need to look at with clear eyes as to whether it is possible to save it and reuse it and make it a catalyst project and a worldwide attraction. We have another year to look at this option, and I feel like we're kind of rushing to judgment here without really looking closely at the possible reuse. I understand Vistra's position and comments that it's expensive, certainly it's expensive. Now, my impression of the building, of course, I love buildings, so maybe I shouldn't express my opinion, but I thought when I took the tour, this is a great building to reuse, to repurpose. Is it dirty? Has it been abandoned for a long time? Is there a lot of dirt poop in it? Yes. But when I looked at the structure and the concrete and the floor of that is 10 feet thick, I mean, when they built these things back in the 50s, they figured, well, let's make it stronger, so they'd add another five feet of concrete and rebar. So this building is built, and I think it has enormous potential for reuse. So I look at the stacks as part of that, and if we release the stacks for demolition, we basically say goodbye to that opportunity. I'd like to see us take the next year and make our own independent analysis of the structure of the building and what it would cost to rehab, like they did in San Francisco. They hired a consultant who put together an RFQ, who sent it out to 50 developers across the country who do these kinds of projects, and said, hey, take a look at this. You think it makes sense? And I think we need to do that, just do our due diligence. Now, it may not make sense. Maybe Vistra is 100% correct, that it makes no sense, it won't pencil out, but we haven't really actively pursued developers, and I'm not sure that Vistra has either. When the CEO visited, he said, well, this is an electric company, we're not developers. And I get that. So I wonder how aggressively this option has been pursued. The truth is, as Bill Roshan said, who's a planning commissioner now and sat on the LA Planning Commission for eight years, he was president of the Planning Commission, he said, "Once projects like this are gone, they're gone for good." A little plaque commemorating what was here is nothing compared to possible reuse and making this into a catalyst project. I think we should take a year to look at it more closely and come up with our own opinion as opposed to what we've been told by people. So that's my comment.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Heller. I will tell you that, just in response to that, I've been on the Vistra Subcommittee for now my fifth year. When Dynegy owned the property, no less than four capital venture investment firms came through discussing with Dynegy potential options to repurpose not only the building and potentially use the stacks, but also to develop the parcel. Unfortunately, economically, none of it made sense, and none of those capital venture folks moved forward. Thusly, Dynegy ended up, as you know, being basically purchased by Vistra. So I just wanted to add that little historical comment that when Dynegy did have it, a number of venture capital folks looked at it, could make no financial sense of doing anything with the parcel, so.
Okay, I appreciate knowing that, because I didn't know that that was the case. But I think, that's notwithstanding that, we should take one more look before we bring in the bulldozers. So that's my position.
Great, I appreciate that. I do disagree. Councilmember Ford. I see your hand.
Yeah, sorry, thank you. I was unmute myself, sorry. Thank you, Mayor. You know, Councilmember Heller, I had the same question as well earlier when this came across our, when we got this packet. You know, and I did some digging and found out as well that there were several opportunities for a developer to come in, and, you know, and it just, it hasn't happened, and there hasn't been anything that was successful or even potential until this point with Vistra. But I did share that same concern as you. But I have to say that I'm going to echo what Councilmember Addis, you know, said about community, how the dialogue has changed. I've had several people reach out to me by phone call and, you know, of course, email and whatnot, and just stopping people on the street, you know, that I know, talking to them, and of course, their first question, their first comment is, oh my gosh, you're on council, guess what, you're going to have to decide on the fate of the stacks. And so my question to them is always, how do you feel about the stacks? And that has really been a, there's been a shift after the educational portion of the city's effort to put forth all the, you know, the facts about the stacks and stuff like that. I've received all positive feedback from that point on to demolish the stacks. And, but it's always paired with historical significance, you know, and I appreciate the fact that our city manager incorporated in his presentation, and we've added to the motion, the part about our commitment, you know, the commitment from Vistra to honor the stacks. So I think that our community, if I'm listening, if I'm hearing right from the community, which I feel is my responsibility as a council member, what I've heard at this point is, we want to take the stacks down, however, we want to honor its history and its significance. And so with that being said, I feel as though this motion does honor that, and so therefore I support it.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford, appreciate that. Other discussion? Looking for anybody else? Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and call the question. Do a voice vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
And they are heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1.
Great, thank you for, again, Mr. Collins, an excellent report. I know it took a lot of time to actually get all of the information, and I appreciate the outreach that was done on your part to our community. Thank you, Council, for a very lively discussion. Always good debate when we have differing opinions, to air those opinions and openly discuss them. That brings us to Item C-2. This is adoption of Resolution Number 72-21, awarding fiscal year 2021, 22, community grants. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Collins, I believe, again.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers, community members. So, yes, this item is regarding our annual, oh, yes.
I believe Councilmember Ford.
Oh, sorry about that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. My apologies. Go ahead, please.
It's okay. I couldn't do it, I couldn't unmute myself fast enough to stop.
I had my note, and I didn't get it best enough, I apologize.
No worries, you know, Zoom, it's okay. I need to recuse myself from this item because I have a financial interest in one or more of the applicants for the grant, and therefore I need to be removed from this discussion.
Closing that, and I'll let Dana de-zoom you, we're calling that, now that's a new word, we're de-zooming you. We'll wait. Thank you. And Councilmember Barton, I'm sorry, did I see a hand?
Yes.
Yes, yes, please.
I just wanted to say, I don't have a financial interest in it, but I do volunteer with Moro Bay and Bloom, so I don't think I need to recuse myself, but I just wanted to let that be known.
Chris, any comment?
The two legal requirements for recusal are either a financial interest in the matter before the council, or you're actually a party to one of the contracts. And based on what Councilmember Barton said, I don't think she meets either of those unless there's some other facts I'm not aware of. So she would not need to recuse herself based on that.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Barton, for expressing that, and I guess it's AGP, we got to get rid of Councilmember Ford.
Yes, I'd ask for their help, thanks.
Oh, thank you. We're going to wait a minute, Jen, until you're de-zoomed before we start discussion This is your public break opportunity, folks, public health. All right, I think we've got her removed into the outer room. Mr. Collins, take it away.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I didn't stop in time. So, yeah, we're talking about the fiscal year 2021, 2022, community grants. The recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number 72-21, awarding community grants for fiscal year 21, 22, and also authorizing city manager to enter in agreements with said grantees. So just by way of background, in the past, the city used to basically allocate funds to the same nonprofits without any kind of review process, not to say that those nonprofits weren't deserving or in need, but it sort of didn't have any rigor. And the Government Finance Officers Association and other entities recommend that there is some development of criteria by which to evaluate proposals for grant funds. And so that was brought forward as a change for fiscal year 1920, was the first year that we utilized an application process. Council gave sort of a blanket authorization for a total amount to be spent on grants, and then there was an application process, a review by staff, and it was brought forward to city council for approval. We did not continue that program into last fiscal year because of COVID-19 impacts, but city council did approve in this year's budget, an increase up to $25,000 for regular grants, and then using the ARPA funds or the American Rescue Act funds, another $25,000 for nonprofits, local nonprofits that were impacted by COVID-19. So we received, I believe, 13 applications for both pots of the total and for both pots of money, and I took it upon myself to create a community grants review committee, mainly because I was just extremely busy and I wanted to make sure I had people who cared about getting these recommendations right, and who had experience in our community, have worked in nonprofit world or volunteered for them, and had some sense of what makes sense, and also shared with them the criteria that council had approved previously for review of these requests. And they spent over a month working on this, including Marlese McPherson, who we all know as a former council member, Elmer Alexander, who is a current citizen finance advisory committee member, and Don Beatty, who's been in our community for quite some time, has a good understanding of these things. And so they took it upon themselves to review these application requests against the stated criteria by the city council, and provided me recently what their recommended funding amounts. They also provided as an attachment a memo that sort of outlined the justifications, a rationale for their recommendations. And myself and Assistant City Manager Sarah Johnson-Rios reviewed the memo, didn't find any significant issues with their recommendations, and just brought them forward as it is. So I can share my screen, I know council has the benefit of seeing their packets, but I'll just sort of share my screen so that you can see what's being recommended in terms of funding here on the screen right here. So we would recommend, based on the community grants review committee, the work that they put in, and the justifications that they provided, that we fund those programs as recommended on that chart, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. And I'll just leave that screen up for a moment.
Okay, Scott, great, thank you. And I just wanted to thank the committee, thank you for bringing in some of our community members to assist in looking at the criteria and making recommendations based upon those criteria. And of course, great staff report, easy to read, very clear. Open it up for council questions on this item, we're on Item C-2. Councilmember Heller, sir, see your hand.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Scott, could you give me a brief overview of the criteria within the grants policy? I didn't get a chance to read this in great detail. Just a general overview?
Yeah, that's a really good question, Councilmember Heller. Perhaps Sarah could be a lifeline, if not, it is spelled out in the resolution. I mean, ultimately, it's trying to connect to city council goals, that it serves Moro Bay residents, you know, that they are nonprofit status. And I think primarily, it's just trying to achieve outcomes locally for Moro Bay residents, not designed to be fundraisers for the entity, but really set out specific programs or equipment purchases or discreet things that the city would actually be helping to fund.
Scott, let me just point out, it's on, Councilmember Heller, it's Page 162 of the staff report, it's at the very bottom, very simply outlined, just FYI. Yeah, thank you.
Let me pull that up, sorry, I didn't get a chance to look at it.
Yeah, Page 162.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that, appreciate it. Those are my only questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Addis, yes?
I'm not sure if my question is for staff or for my colleagues, or both. But one wonder I have is if we could pull a teeny tiny bit of COVID impact money from the two organizations that are overfunded, just to make buy the C-hole. I think it would be just over $170, maybe $172.
Perhaps when we get to, after public comment, when we get to discussion, would that be okay if we held that until then?
Sure, and then can I ask the other question?
Absolutely.
Who it's for? The other question is, is there a possibility, and maybe this is a staff question, if council wanted to allot more than the $50,000 so that we could fund a couple other things, would that be possible without breaking the budget?
Depends on the amount, you know, I think the previous year we did the funding, it was $16,000, and so we expanded the regular community grant funding to $25,000, and then we added the COVID-19 impacts through ARPA. And just to be known that, you know, we're not guaranteed that those funds can be used for these community grants for the COVID impacts, so ultimately, depending on, you know, the final rules issued by the federal government, that may change still, those funds may need to be backed by the general fund. That all being said, if it's a minimal amount, you know, I'm sure we can make it work, just want to make sure it sort of falls within the criteria established by city council.
Thank you.
You bet. Councilmember Barton, yes, see your hand.
Scott, can you refresh my memory about the total amount of ARPA funds that we think we're getting?
Yes, the first, they call them tranches, I don't know, I've never heard that term before, but now I've heard it a million times ever since the funding was approved. So there's two pots, I guess, the cities get, you know, the first half in, you know, this past previous summer, then we get the next half next summer. In total, I believe that amounts to about 2.2. In total, I believe that amounts to about $2.3 to $2.5 million for the city. Council is, you know, preliminary through the budget. Of course, again, we're waiting for final rakes from the federal government. But we assigned the majority of the first half of those funds, if you will, to city equipment, a lot of other one-time investments because we know this money is not ongoing. And of course, supporting that notion of one-time, that's why we felt it was appropriate. And council approved adding that, those $19 for community grants to help those individual organizations through their one-time challenges related to COVID.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barton. Looks like that's all the questions. Thanks again, Scott. I'll go ahead now and open up public comment. This is public comment for item C dash two on the agenda this evening. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this? Now would be the time. And Highland, do we have public comments, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. First up, we have Janet Hilsen. Janet, you have been unmuted.
Welcome, Janet. Janet, can you hear me?
Okay, I think I'm good now.
You're good. We can hear you. Welcome.
I initially was going to plead the case for the Morro Bay Art Association, also known as the Art Center in Morro Bay. But I saw from Scott's screen that we had been awarded the grant money that we asked for. So now I'm just going to thank the council for giving us the grant money we had asked for, mostly due to COVID-19, the way it impacted the art association. We were closed for many months to the public. We did reopen as soon as we were allowed to safely reopen, hoping to encourage people to come back out and come downtown and frequent businesses. Mostly, we were impacted by the loss of our Art in the Park event. We put on that event three times a year. It's our major source of income. And we lost four of those between 2020 and early 2021. So between losing Art in the Park and having no classes and having no workshops and having no art sales, we were financially very impacted by COVID. So this will help the gallery out just on, you know, day-to-day operations. So thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Highland, next to public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next, we have K. and R. Crowfoot.
Welcome.
Hello. My name is Rhonda Crowfoot, and I am the president of the Board of By the Sea Productions. And I just want to say thank you to the city council and to the staff for our wonderful grant. We have been closed. We've had two shows, one in 2021 and 2021. In this past two years, we just recently had to cancel our last hoped-for shows just because of the mask mandates. This money will ensure that our theater and our group be around. And hopefully, we'll get some shows, more shows in in 2022. Again, thank you so very much to the council and to staff for getting us this money. Thank you.
Thank you. Highland, next public comment, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next, we have Richard Sadowski.
Richard already spoke on the item.
Ah, all right. In that case, we have Scott Mather.
Hey, welcome, Scott.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And I just wanted to thank staff right now for your, I'm Scott Mather, President of the Morro Bay Maritime Museum. I want to thank staff for your positive response to our grant application and for having the foresight and seeing the value of what we bring to city Morro Bay and the embarcadero, not just for our visitors, but also for our local community. It means a lot to them. I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you. Next public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no more raised hands in the queue.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion recommendation. I think Councilmember Addis. I apologize earlier. I just wanted it to occur at the right time. So please continue with your thoughts.
Well, that's what I was saying. I wasn't sure where that question should go. But so just two questions. I don't know. Again, I'm not sure if it's if I'm asking my colleagues to support this right now or if asking staff if it's possible. But the gist is, if we might ratchet back just by, I think, $172 each of the programs that are funded beyond their request so that we could make Buy the Sea fund whole for their entire request, it's only $344 difference. And then if we could fund at least one of the projects that is unfunded, because I believe it really does important work for Morro Bay. And the third part of that is, and if we don't fund it now, is there a way to provide a commitment to a certain level of funding if that project gets funding from other agencies? And I'm talking about the air quality monitors.
I don't know if Sarah's on, but I would divert to her that question of sort of moving around the funds related to COVID-19 and seeing if there's any audit issues. I don't think there is an issue with that. With regard to, I think, the third question. I forgot the second question already.
The second one's around the air quality monitors. If we could fund something for them, for that project from Ecologistics.
That absolutely could. You could either take from some of the other recommended funds. And I think you had asked earlier if additional funds could be added to the pot. If you were to do that, we would need to bring forward a budget amendment at mid-year to account for that since this is what's been budgeted for this fiscal year. And as far as a commitment to the future, I think that would just sort of be a future agenda item, but I don't know exactly for sure. And Sarah, anything I missed on that? The question of sort of moving a few hundred dollars here and there to get By the Sea up to their full request?
No, I think you covered it with your previous comment that the organizations are going to need to provide some documentation to accompany those requests when we get around to submitting that.
Yeah, so moving the funds won't change that fact, Councilmember Addis. So you definitely could do that. And again, and to answer again the question about the Ecologistics, if you wanted to add funds, you could either take from another program or add funds. And then we just have to do an amendment to the budget at a later time.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is discussion and recommendation time. So I'm going to look for any other hands that... See, Councilmember Heller, yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would support some additional money or some money for Ecologistics as well. I think it's a really good program. And so it's the only one here that addresses climate change, which I think is important. And I'd like to talk about that. Propose a transfer of funds.
Now's the time.
I'd like to suggest that at least perhaps $1,000 from Morro Bay and Bloom and transfer that to Ecologistics.
Okay, so you're suggesting we move $1,000 from Morro Bay and Bloom to Ecologistics?
Yes, yes, sir.
I'm taking notes on everybody's thoughts here, so.
Lucky you.
Yeah, well, that's my job, I guess.
Could we see, sorry to interrupt, Mayor. Could we see the chart again? I'm pulling it up on my own computer. But would that be okay?
Sure, absolutely. Go ahead, Scott, if you want to share your screen. It is page 158, if you do have the staff report.
Mine's just loading slowly.
No worries. Thank you, Scott. So we have Morro Bay in Bloom, which has 8,000, asked for grant recommendation of 6,500, requests by Councilmember Heller to move 1,000 of that to Ecologistics to reduce Morro Bay and Bloom to 5,500, if I heard correctly.
That's correct. Thank you, Mayor.
Are we discussing, sorry to interrupt again? Are we discussing or should we make a, put a motion on the floor?
Well, I'd like to kind of get a sense of what people are thinking and then maybe craft a motion. So basically, it sounds like, according to staff, we're going to have to come back if we want to add more money with a budget amendment.
You could approve it tonight. We just, as part of the mid-year.
We'll bring that back.
It would just be a line item in the mid-year budget.
Yeah, okay, good. So Councilmember Heller and maybe Councilmember Addis, if you wanted to add that $1,000 to Ecologistics and not touch Morro Bay and Bloom, you could do that. That would raise the total amount, but that would come back in a budget amendment, as Mr. Collins said. So go ahead, Councilmember Addis.
I would agree with increasing. I don't want to take money from Morro Bay and Bloom. One of the pieces of the recommendation, though, was that the Ecologistics project is going to need much bigger funding than we're able to provide. And they're going out for a much larger grant. So I just want to, I want to be thoughtful and intentional about not getting ahead of ourselves. But I do want to give them a little bit. So moving $1,000, not moving, adding $1,000 I could live with. And then the other part of my proposal, if I was to make a motion, would be to fully fund By the Sea just by pulling $172. I should defer to Sarah on the math, though.
$344.
Well, but it would be $172 each, I think, from senior nutrition and...
Oh, well, we were just going to add. I was suggesting we just add or increase. It's just not.
Oh, just increase?
Yeah, just increase.
That's fine, too. If we can find $1,344, I'm good with that, too.
All righty. I'm trying to simplify it so that we're not trying to subtract. Yeah. Okay, Councilmember Barton, yes?
So did I understand you that the, we will be seeing this again? So for Ecologistics, if they are seeking other grants, we might see at some point the grants that they have secured and perhaps be able to give them a small amount that would bring them to the total they were looking for? Is that kind of what you're thinking?
I think what's being proposed is that $1,000, which goes beyond what the county is providing and funding.
Which is $600, right?
Yeah, and then they're in the process of trying to secure these larger grant funds. And this would come back, I assume would come back next year as another request. And at that point, if successful, then more inclination to fully fund a request at that time.
Okay. That sounds like it's more doable.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Barton. I think I'm getting to a motion here, it sounds like. If there's any other input, I certainly concur with that. What I'm hearing, and I'll just look for heads, and then if you want me to make the motion, fine. If not, anybody can make it, would be that we increase the amount allocated from $25,000 to $26,344, adding $1,000 to Ecologistics and adding $344 to By the Sea Productions. Is that correct?
It's close.
I'm close, okay, good.
Regular community grants would be increased to $26,000 with the $1,000 added.
I got you.
And the COVID-19 would be, would move from $25,000 to $25,344 to account for By the Sea Productions.
I stand corrected by our excellent city manager. And I see head shaking, Councilmember Addis, as you started this. Would you like to make the motion?
Sure, I'll move to approve the grant recommendation with the addition of $1,000 from the regular community grant fund to go to Ecologistics and the addition of $344 more to come from ARPA funds. So we would be at, I think, $51,344 total.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Addis with those minor changes. Second by Councilmember Heller. Any further discussion? I'm hearing none. I'll do a roll call vote. Roll call vote.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
No, she's not with us. She's recused.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
And Mayor Hitting.
Yes.
Motion carries 401.
Thank you. And thanks again to the community group that provided input and went through all of our criteria. Thank you for staff, all your work on this. And great discussion, council. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
Let's, yes.
Pardon me. Did the motion include part two of the staff recommendation related to insurance requirements in each of the contracts?
You know, thank you for that. I should go back and catch that. Let's see, that's part two. Authorize city manager, yes, okay. So I will go ahead. I'm going to have to add to the motion here. Councilmember Addis, you want to make an amendment adding item two, page 157?
Or a new motion, perhaps, since we already took the vote?
That's right. That's a good idea. A new motion to authorize the city manager to enter into agreements with all guarantees, reviewing and adjusting insurance requirements on a case-by-case basis in coordination with California JPIA and city attorney's office, depending on the level of risk associated. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mayor Hitting for item two on the recommendation, second by Councilmember Addis. Any further discussion? And thank you, Dana, for catching that. I appreciate it. We'll go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Mayor Hitting?
Yes.
Motion carries 401.
And if we could re-admit, resume, Councilmember Ford? We'll go to item D. Councilmember Addis, did you have a hand up? Yes.
Future agenda items?
Yeah, I'm, there she is.
Oh, okay.
Councilmember Ford was here. Are there any future agenda items? I see your hand, Councilmember Addis. Thanks.
I would like to ask my colleagues to agendize a future resolution in recognition of our, recognition, excuse me, of our prioritization of community health as well as our focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And this future resolution would declare our commitment to being a city that welcomes all people, is committed to community health, including reproductive freedom, and affirms the constitutional rights enshrined by Roe.
And I would, oh, we're getting that echo. I would support that. Looking for other hands. Is that, are hands up supporting or comments? Okay, so I see, I see one, two, three. Councilmember Barton or Keller? If I see no hand, then, okay. So I see four hands supporting that. Thank you. Councilmember Addis, Councilmember Heller, I think you had your hand up for a future agenda item, no, yes?
That's correct, that's correct.
Well, it's down now, so, go ahead, Jeff, sorry.
Okay, so, so here's my future agenda item, I'd like to thank Scott Collins for helping me draft this. I would like staff to work with Corolo Engineering to revise their WRF quarterly report to get more user-friendly, and bring it back, the new proposed template for review to the council at the meeting, the one and only meeting in December, when the next WRF quarterly report will be reviewed by the council.
And I'll support that, and thank Councilmember Heller, who is on the WRF Subcommittee with myself, we're trying, and through his leadership, trying to simplify it for us all. So not any major work for you, the Subcommittee will do the work, and if people will agree, we'll just bring it back during the WRF quarterly report, as he said. So I see heads shaking, or hands up, looks like that's a go. Thank you, Councilmember Heller, and Councilmember Barton, oh, no, nothing. Any other future agenda, Councilmember Ford, welcome back.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I do have a possible suggestion for a future agenda item, I'm not sure if it would be agenda agendized, or if it would just be council direction, I mean, staff direction, but I have a concern, and it's been raised by a few community members on the speed on San Jacinto, in the Coral intersection, when people are coming off of the highway, there's, there is a more, I would say, people forget that they're entering into a residence, and so speed becomes a factor, and then they zoom through, and then there's a yield on Coral for, you know, each direction, and oft, more often than not, I've noticed, you know, kids trying to cross, and, you know, it just being a possible issue because there's no crosswalk, or any type of, you know, way of bringing attention to the people, especially if they're a visitor coming off the highway, that this is a potential crossing area for cyclists or pedestrians. So I would like to request maybe that we have some sort of speed survey that could be conducted on San Jacinto, and, you know, it's also, from what I've heard from other residents.
I want to help, I want to just help guide you. Since you're new, we, instead of being prescriptive with regard to what the outcome would be, are you looking for a general report regarding safety-related issues and potential items that might be looked at to improve safety? Is that more?
Yeah, and, you know, just before I, we get even consider what's needed there, I just think that it's important to do, you know, a speed survey or something like that to see if it's even needed, because, you know, when I'm, when the idea's been brought to me by a couple of community members on both sides of the highway, you know, on that particular street, and so just listening to, you know, the community and knowing that there's a concern with the speed, you know, I'm just trying, seeing that if we could do a speed survey, and then see if there's anything needed from that point on.
Mr. Collins, did you want to?
Yeah, sure, I think that's a reasonable request, one thing to note is, we, the goals, you're coming back on, again, I believe on a special meeting on November, and one of the, you know, not to foretell too much, one of the items that we want to put under, consider putting under as an action item for public infrastructure is a speed survey, writ large, we haven't done one in our community in a long time. And so we've heard from the community members that that may be a troubling area, we know Main Street has some challenges and other parts of the community, that we could kind of roll into that. Further, you know, as far as a potential stop sign or something going to that spot, and we do have a resolution, council resolution sort of guides how that's done, and I think that's something that Greg Qualick, our Public Works Director, has already told council, he's, you know, going to be looking into how that, how that may need to be changed, maybe times have changed where that resolution is no longer sufficient. So I think those things in combination would sort of help address that specific issue of San Jacinto, and it's not just San Jacinto, there's other areas of our community that are experiencing these challenges. So maybe it's not specific to that, it's just, it's going to come forward and maybe see how that shows up at the goals discussion, and if that's not sufficient, we could get specific to San Jacinto. So that's the suggestion, but hope that helps.
Councilmember Ford, that reasonable?
Yeah, no, I think that's reasonable, I think that's a great suggestion, and I agree, it's not at all, you know, centralized around just this one particular area, I'm sure it is in many other areas, and so I think it's great to visit that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Addis, I see your hand.
Well, I actually do want to emphasize San Jacinto, it's our safer up to school, and I think it's incredibly important that we pay attention to the entire city, but that particular street comes off of Highway One in both directions, and the direction that kids are going to school in is primarily on the east side of the highway, however, a lot of neighborhood people also on the west side of the highway, so if we had more things than we could get done, I would want to make sure San Jacinto particularly rises to the top as a safer up to school.
Yeah, I think the speed survey will identify where, you know, moving beyond perception, get to reality, and also, like, and it's not always just a speed survey, there's, it's not just speed limits that could help curb speeds, if you will, no pun intended, there are other things that maybe are less intrusive or expensive that could get the same outcomes, so, we're hoping that a speed survey would kind of elucidate that and help guide council decision-making, but ultimately, yes, the authority relies with you all to make sure we're keeping our community safe, so. But again, if we want, we can get more specific, but if that direction's okay, we can kind of see how it goes on the ninth, and if that's, sorry, the tenth, when the goals come back, we can modify if that's not sufficient.
Is that okay with you guys? Yeah, okay, great, all right, and that is the tenth, that meeting will be scheduled for the 10th of November. Okay, seeing no further future agenda items, I'll thank everybody for your kind attention and excellent input. The next regular meeting of the City of Morro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, November 9, 2021, at 5:30 PM via teleconference. Thank you, have a good evening, be safe and be well, and we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Good night.